...in our audience tonight and also those of you who are viewing us remotely. As somebody pointed out to me this afternoon, it is almost three years since we have gathered in this room as a group, so it's good to be back here. But this is also the first time that we are doing our meeting via hybrid, i.e. that there are people in the audience and that we also are able to have people participate remotely. So I want everybody to know, we have done some practice runs, we have hopefully got everything in order, but if there are glitches tonight, please bear with us. This is the first time. In addition, as we go through this, if people have thoughts about how we can improve or what we can do better, then please reach out to us and our town manager, Kristin Lass, who I would like to introduce to everybody tonight. Kristin started with us January 31st, but this is her first Select Board meeting. And I think for many people attending tonight, both here and remotely, this is their first opportunity to meet you and to see you. So welcome, Kristin, and we look forward to working with you, and we promise to be easy on you tonight in your first meeting.
Thank you all.
We have a couple of things for open forum, and the first item on our open forum is that we would like to congratulate the following Westford Academy sports teams, who over the past fall and winter have won the dual-county league championship. And those teams include the boys' cross-country team, our football team, the golf team, boys' basketball, gymnastics, girls' indoor track and field, the boys' swim and dive team, the girls' swim and dive team, both of whom, the last, I understand, are going to the state championships this weekend. So congratulations to all of our student athletes for a job well done. Then I think Steve Cronin, you wanted to announce something having to do with the Beaverbrook Bridge project.
Sure. Thank you very much, Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works. So the Public Works Department created a Facebook page last week to keep residents updated on the various Public Works projects around town. We posted on there earlier today an update on the Beaverbrook Bridge project. It can be found at Westford Public Works as a Facebook page. And the website, direct website for the project is www.wesfordma.gov/BeaverbrookBridge. So we started some light construction activities out there this week, and the project is on schedule and expected to be completed by the fall of this year. So we hopefully will have that road back open sometime in September, rather. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a brief discussion about the proposed gun shop business that was before the planning board, I believe, two weeks ago. The Select Board is certainly aware of the concerns that have been raised by our residents regarding gun and weapon businesses locating to Westford, and please be assured that we share your concerns. First, I want to refer people to the town's website, where a statement prepared by our town manager, police chief, and director of land use management has been posted. I'm not going to read the entire statement tonight, it's too long to read, to be honest, but I would urge everyone to go to the website to review that statement. It has a lot of information about the process both before the planning board, as well as what is required to obtain a license to bear a firearm here in Westford in Massachusetts. You all should be aware that over the last month, the police department has been working with the land use management department to investigate and draft a legally tenable zoning bylaw related to firearm sales and gunsmithing. Any such bylaw has to go through a public hearing process before the planning board, then be brought to town meeting for approval by the town, and then submitted to the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts for final approval. To address one issue that has been raised by the residents, we cannot draft a bylaw that outright prohibits these businesses. We can, however, draft a bylaw that gives the town greater oversight for any future applications. And as we move forward in this process, that is the goal of the planning board, as it starts to formulate a zoning bylaw. The town is currently working as efficiently and expeditiously as possible towards drafting a bylaw and in bringing it forward for review and approval as soon as possible. We all recognize the immediacy of this issue and the concerns of our residents, and we're committed to responding to those concerns and the issues in as timely and responsible manner as possible. And when the bylaw is ready, we will call a special town meeting for the town's consideration of any such bylaw. I am happy to entertain any questions. Our police chief is here tonight, who will also any questions if they are specific to firearms. But I do want to let people know, we've heard your concerns, the Select Board has had, I've lost count of how many emails we've had from Concerned Residents, so honestly, we hear you, we don't really need to hear that again, but if you have specific questions, we're certainly willing to answer those questions.
Could I just, I just wanted to add that, for those people who aren't aware, when we're bringing it forward to town meeting and the town is deciding, it's the residents, everyone in town who's a registered voter, who attends town meeting and is welcome to attend, to vote on that bylaw. It's not the elected boards who run town meeting, it's the residents. So if you want your voice heard, go to town meeting, and special town meeting, any kind of town meeting.
Just go to town meeting. All right, thank you. Any, yeah.
The questions I've heard most often are, one, are we committing to calling a special town meeting as soon as possible, which I just heard you say, and we've talked about before. And the other question is, any sense of timeline? I know it's tough and hard to predict, but do we have any sort of general best case, knowing that we have a lot of flexibility in getting this through and getting it drafted correctly?
It's our hope to be able to do it in the spring.
Okay.
But I can't commit to a specific date.
Yeah. I know we're going as fast as we can, I just have heard people ask, what does that mean?
There are specific legal notices that need to be posted in the paper and planning board public hearings, so I've been in contact with the land use department every day on this matter. We are working as fast as we can on a potential draft bylaw that will have to be reviewed by council, and it is a priority that's been set forth by the Select Board to myself and staff.
Thanks.
Okay. If you do have questions, that's fine, you need to come to the microphone there, and then state, please tell us your name, okay, and where you live, okay? So, ma'am.
Lauren McNamie, I live in Westford. I was just wondering about neighboring businesses, and they have to be informed, and do they have to consent to the gun shop being in that location, or?
So when a bylaw is drafted and there is a public hearing, notice goes out to abutters, okay? And abutters, and correct me if I'm wrong, are those either individuals or businesses, basically owners of the land, who are within 300 feet of the site, or within 300 feet of the abutter of the site? Is that, have I got that right?
So I'm not sure what the practice is for Westford for zoning bylaws for a butter notification. I do know that that is the case for site plan approval and special permit, so I'd want to confirm with.
It is the practice for zoning bylaws as well. So yes, there is a circumscribed group of folks who will be given notice of the hearing. That being said, it is publicized, you know, and it will appear on an agenda, so, you know, anybody within town, or actually anybody can come to that public hearing and speak.
Okay, so they don't have like a special power in it, being located, okay?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Palika Knani here. Are there any applications currently in the pipeline, any additional applications currently in the pipeline for additional gun shops while such laws are being drafted?
I don't know of any applications that are other than the one that we have, that the planning board has before, other than that one, I do not know of any others.
Thank you.
Hi, Molly Munder, I'm on the drive. I'm just wondering if you get applications during this process, are they on hold until after the town vote, or is it not until after the Attorney General approves?
No, there's a grandfathering process, so my understanding is that once we give public notice of the hearing, that if and when any such bylaw is approved, it is retroactive to that date of public notice.
Okay. And the public notice, that's what you were saying, so you think the special meeting would be in the spring and the public notice of that would be a little bit earlier?
Yes.
And then, once the public notice goes out, any application that comes after that is on hold, essentially? Is that?
Basically, yes. I mean, it could go forward, but if the bylaw passes, then it is subject to the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Babita, 2002 Road, Westford. So till the bylaws don't change or addition is made, the application won't get approved?
The application that is before the planning board now
Yes.
will not be subject to any bylaw that we pass.
So it can get approved?
Yes.
Before the bylaw changes?
Yes. This one application can, yes.
Ah, okay.
Hi, I'm Nina, 120 Lovell Road. So in continuation to Babita's question, so if you are saying, like this application which is already in front, it can be approved, then what are we deciding in the town meeting? Like if the resident's voice is not heard, right, if we have no way, no place to make a decision, so where are the decision being made, that this gun shop can be approved to be located in Westford?
That's true. This gun shop can now be approved. I mean, I know many of you went to the planning board meeting, my understanding is that a draft order of conditions is being done right now to be presented before the planning board at their next, I don't know if it's at their next meeting, but I assume it's at their next meeting, where you're certainly all welcome to go and attend and voice any concerns that you may have there, but from a zoning perspective, this gun, this particular gun shop will not be subject to any subsequent zoning bylaw that we pass.
So should we think, like, this is coming, this shop, I mean, there is no way we can stop it coming to Westford?
You know, unless the planning board does not approve it.
But who is on the planning board? I mean, it's
It's a separate, it's a separate elected board.
It is a separate board than this board.
We don't have authority over the planning board, we don't have authority over other elected boards. But I guess what I would say is, the point of still having a special town meeting is because, as Andrea was saying, it's for more oversight over future applications that come in. We can't say a certain type of business is not allowed in town, that's not legal, but we can have better oversight of what that looks like. So that's why we're working on that other bylaw, to create more clarity, to create more oversight, but for the one that's already come in, they're going through the process of how it is right now. So everyone's working as fast as they can, literally, they've been working on this for weeks already, on looking at the bylaw language, to figure out how we can create that oversight for all the same concerns that, you know, we share. And so I guess I would just say that, that's kind of where we are right now, and we're not on a separate team from you, we're on the same team.
Yeah, but the thing is, one is enough, right? If one shop, okay, two shops, three shops, but even if there is one shop, it pick the same concern for the, I think Westford is a town where we move for the kids, right? We could be somewhere else, but it's the town which we think is most kid-friendly, I have three boys, I get scared of these news when I hear. So definitely, I don't want to be in a town where there is a gun shop, right, and some is easily can buy and then, you know, come here. So there should be some rules, right?
And hopefully, there will be, moving forward.
Yeah, I have two kids too, I have a five-year-old and a nine-year-old.
I think we all have.
I know.
I think we all share your concerns.
We all share your concerns.
We would all like to be able to, I guess we have certain constraints. So the place that your voice is heard, you mentioned before, what's the point of going to the town meeting? The place where your voice is heard and every resident is heard that comes to town meeting is approving these new rules, this new set of rules that we're putting together that we want to make sure are legal. But we have to follow the set of rules that exists at the time when the application comes in. So the power that we have is to update the rules to make them stronger, and we're going to do that. But we don't have the power to change the rules retroactively when someone comes and applies to have a business here in the town, if that makes sense. So we're operating within a certain set of constraints, but aside from those constraints, we're doing everything that we can.
Thank you. Hi, I'm sorry, I was, I'm trying to monitor everything, so, thanks, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, Andrea, I'm Titus Palmer, Vos Road. I guess, maybe I'm coming in a little late, but has the board voted, the Select Board, voted to endorse a bylaw before it's even been proposed, or is it just your individual opinions that this type of business shouldn't be here?
We haven't voted to endorse anything, and won't until we have a bylaw in front of us, that we can see.
Okay, because I just, I heard twice a statement that we're all on the same page and we're all working in the same direction. And, you know, I know there's a certain amount of residents that question why there is so much uproar about illegal business, many of which have existed in surrounding towns, in my lifetime have existed in this town. And if you drive to Nashua, you know, basically anyone over 21 with a driver's license and no criminal record can walk into any gun store in Hudson or places we all go every day, so I'm just confused. It sounded to me like some of you had taken a position already.
You know, I don't know that we've, we haven't taken a position on a zoning bylaw. I think the position that we've taken is that we've heard concerns from the residents, and we acknowledge those concerns, the planning board has heard concerns from the residents, and we're working to address those concerns.
Okay, well then, I would like to go on record as a resident
Certainly.
who is concerned about over-regulating a legal business that exists throughout this state, so, and that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Titus.
I'd like to just very briefly
You first need to tell me who you are.
Jennifer Valandri, Almeria Circle. I'd like to just very briefly say that I oppose the gun shop, and that's it.
Okay. I think, okay, if you're getting up to stand up to say you oppose the gun shop, we're not going to hear that tonight. If you have a question, then, I'm just, there are two people behind you, I wasn't actually talking to you.
Yes, I was saying, but
But if you've got a question, we will answer your questions, okay?
My name's Barghaveta, I thought I heard something earlier, and I just want to make sure I was right. Did you say that the new gun shop will not be subject to the new bylaws, or?
Yes, that's right.
May I ask why?
Because it was proposed at a time when the new bylaws, if there are new bylaws in, okay, did not exist. It is being proposed under our current bylaws, and under our current bylaws right now, that business has the right to exist in Westford.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, this is Prashant from Seven Carriage Way, Westford. You mentioned that there was a different board who carried out the Planning Commission Board. Who sits on that board?
Um, okay.
Probably the best thing is to go to the website.
I was gonna say, you can go to the website and find out exactly
It's called the Planning Board.
And was that approved without any prior consultation of the people of the community?
The Planning Board are elected officials, just like the Board of Select, they run for five-year terms.
Okay, and we can get that information on the website?
You can. And there are, I'll just announce this in general, since we have elections in May, there is one position, a five-year position that is open, and there is a second position where a member is resigning because she will be moving out of state, and so there will be an open position to fill, to fill her term.
Okay, all right. So as a concerned resident of Westford, I oppose to this gun shop. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we're going to move on. I just, we do have a couple of comments in the, in our chat session. I will, I'll just read them, I'm not, I have, I'm sorry, I have all these things popping up on my screen here. Okay. Paul Morse has written that "I'm watching the news concerning the train derailment and hazardous chemical spill in Palestine, Ohio, and poor response by those in charge. I have a simple question for the Select Board, does the town of Westford have a documented emergency plan in place to respond to a significant environmental incident within the town, including a railway, roadway, pipeline, or airborne incidents? If so, is this plan available to the public?" Chief, do you know the answer to that question? And if not, we'll get an answer from Mr. Morse and the community.
Sorry, Steve Cronin might actually have some information too.
Okay.
So every year, the town does update its all hazards plan, including dams, natural disasters. As far as if we have a railway disaster, we will work with the National, I want to say PNM Railway right now, and as well as we have regional response teams and guidelines that we do have. As far as what is specific for hazmat, that would be under fire, and I can't answer that.
Okay. But Mr. Morse, we'll get back to you with a further answer to your question. Mari Cartagino Genova has wrote, I missed the beginning, I'm just curious if the board is, oops, what happened here? If the board is trying to keep a lawful business out of Westford, won't that just drive businesses to other towns in New Hampshire? And no, as I think we stated, legally, we cannot keep businesses out of Westford. What I believe, what the planning board can do is, they can exercise not only on gun shops, but on any business in the town of Westford, through zoning bylaw, they can And then finally, Namida Deshpande has written earlier today, as you know, there was a shooting in Michigan State College, it's really sad to know that there is nothing residents can do to stop this gun shop. Unfortunately, this move is going to drain Westford of caring residents in coming years. All right. With that
Could I just have Beth Morrison, 10 Kelly Road, I just would like to suggest that maybe the town have an educational forum on the ERPO law, which is the Emergency Protective Order Bill that we have in Massachusetts, where if you feel someone is unsafe and they have a firearm, there's a process to remove that firearm from them. So maybe that would be some education the town could provide to residents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
We are, now, we're going to move on at this point. So we're at our 7:05 PM item, which is the consent agenda, and on our consent agenda, we have a request to approve the following. For Town Common, the Boy Scouts of America Troop 437 Annual Bike and Sporting Goods Fundraiser, the applicant is the Boy Scouts of America Troop 437, the date is Saturday, May 6th, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have a banner request for the same event, the Boy Scouts of America Troop 437 Annual Bike and Sporting Goods Fundraiser, the applicant's the Boy Scouts of America Troop 437. The dates are from Friday, April 28th, through Monday, May 8th, in front of the JV to the library. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
A second?
Second.
Oh, we don't have to roll call? Oh, yes, we do.
We do.
Scott is, okay. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are at our 7:10 PM item, which is a joint meeting with the Board of Water Commissioners and Finance Committee to discuss the fiscal year 2024 proposed water rate increase.
Mark Warren, Westford Water Superintendent, so I'm going to slide this over here a bit.
I'll start, Mark.
Oh, okay.
So for the record, Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works. We have Mark and Larry Pinaro, also our Public Works Business Managers here tonight. So at the direction of the Board of Water Commissioners, myself, Mark, and Larry worked to develop the Water Department's fiscal year 24 budget with several objectives in mind. With the proposed budget, we're aiming to continue to provide the current level of service to our water customers, meet state and federal water quality requirements, adequately maintain our sources, treatment facilities, distribution system, and storage tanks, prepare for system growth, and complete the recommended system improvement and reinvestment projects that are outlined in the 2018 Water System Master Plan Update. Unfortunately, in fiscal '24, the Water Department is facing a perfect storm of fiscal, environmental, and regulatory factors that are driving a need for an increase in our water rates. We have been mentioning potential water rate increases during the budget cycle for the last few years, but certainly not to the extent that the current conditions require. The last rate increase occurred back in 2009, close to 14 years ago. Since that rate increase, that rate increase was primarily driven by treatment costs, new source development, and the 2008 Water System Master Plan Update. With that rate increase, we've invested nearly $23 million into our water system. That reinvestment's included purchasing lands to provide, to protect Westford's aquifer. We've permitted, developed, and constructed two new sources that have added close to 2 million gallons of additional water supply per day. We've replaced and redeveloped two existing wells. We've completed 12 water main replacement projects on 30 roads, constructed perchlorate remediation facilities, expanded the capacity of the Nutting Road Treatment Plant, completed major media replacement projects at both water treatment facilities, chemical and technology upgrades at water treatment facilities. We replaced one water storage tank that added over a half a million gallons in additional storage and fire protection to the water system. We rehabilitated one of our water system's original storage tanks from 1907. We completed the department's first water system betterment project in Vine Brook Estates, and we also fully funded the Water Enterprise's OPEB obligations. In order to meet the Water Department's future needs, the Board of Water Commissioners are proposing a 22% rate increase beginning July 1 of '23. I'm going to hand it over to Mark, our Water Superintendent, to explain what's behind that proposed increase, and then we'll be willing to answer any questions of those numbers.
Thank you, Steve. As Steve mentioned, we are facing a perfect storm. If you look up at the slide, you can see that, these are some of the conditions that we are facing. And a few of them stand out, and things that we were really not anticipating. The first one is PFOS treatment. Brief background on that. Currently, in Massachusetts, the standard for PFOS is 20 parts per trillion. In Westford, we have consistently met that standard for almost two years now. However, the EPA is in the process of developing their own water quality standards. Up until 2022, EPA had a guideline of 70 parts per trillion, so we were not really, did not have an understanding, was their new level going to be higher than that, lower than that, what it was going to be? However, later on in 2022, EPA strongly signaled that their new water quality standard was going to be in the single-digit parts per trillion range, okay? And if the EPA has a standard that's lower than the Massachusetts standard, Massachusetts has to follow suit and consequently lower their standards. So if we have a PFOS standard in the single-digit parts per trillion range, we're going to need to have centralized treatment. We won't be able to, you know, individually treat at specific wells. We're going to need two expensive water treatment systems at each one of our current plants. And that's roughly going to be $18 million. Another thing that we're facing is a really dramatic increase in our operating budget driven by an increase in water treatment chemicals. Eric, can you, can you go to the next slide? All right, so water treatment chemicals are a pretty significant part of our operating budget. We are part of a chemical consortium, which we group together with about 60 additional members, other water suppliers, towns, et cetera, and we collectively bid out water treatment chemicals, and that allows us to improve our purchasing power. We get competitive pricing that way. Regardless, in fiscal year '23, we opened our bids, and all of our treatment chemicals were, across the spectrum, were significantly higher. You can see in the slide here, potassium hydroxide, we saw a 73% increase. And that's important, because that's the chemical that we use the most, and in bulk. So this, we took a really big hit to our operating to our operating budget because of this, this dynamic. Eric, could you advance? So this, this slide here just illustrates that jump. You can see chemical costs are relatively consistent over the past 10 years. And then in FY '23, we saw that significant jump. Eric, can you advance? All right. So again, why the rate increase? This slide shows the effects of no rate increases. The important line here is our surplus reserve. Okay? You can see in, in 2026, we are now below what's considered to be a safe minimum reserve level. And in 2027, we're now in deficit. A brief, a brief note on the minimum reserve. This is an American Waterworks Association guideline, but it's more than just a guideline. These are funds that we need to have available to be able to react to emergencies. And as someone brought up as a, earlier, the rail derailment in Ohio was a pretty significant derailment and lots of chemicals spilled. You know, we do have an active rail that runs through town that goes right through our aquifer, and we have wells, you know, along that area. We need funding to be able to react to that on an emergency basis, perhaps purchase water from another town, or truck water in, or look for a new source. And for example, a new source can run right off the bat $2 million. So that's why it's important for us to have these funds available. Eric, could you advance? All right. This, this slide just really backs up those numbers. What's important here is you can see that total revenues are relatively flat. Again, this is with no rate increase. But our disbursements are arising pretty rapidly, specifically 2025, 2026. And that's driven by debt. And that, in turn, is driven by the need for PFOS treatment. Eric, can you advance? All right. So this slide does show three rate increases, the 22% rate increase in 2024. And just, just to note here, the 2022% increase is the only one that's been voted on and approved. The additional increases in '26 and '28 are for projection purposes at this point. And you can see here that with this rate increase, our minimum reserve level is much more healthy, and we were not operating in deficit. And this slide just really just backs it up. It shows that our revenues are keeping, keeping track with disbursements, and it's allowing us to maintain a healthy reserve. All right. So this next slide shows the, the actual increase. So in Westford, we bill on a quarterly basis. We bill per 100 cubic feet. And we also have residential rates and commercial rates. So, and within those two sets of rates, we have three steps. So as you can see, for the first step for residential property, for up to 2,500 cubic feet, the cost is going to be $4.19 per 100 cubic feet. And in FY '24, with a 22% increase, that's going to rise to $5.11. And, you know, and so on for the remaining, remaining rates, remaining steps. Okay, Eric, can you advance one last time? Okay, so this is my last slide. And what this does is shows, so in Westford, the average water usage is 8,200 cubic feet, which is roughly 63,000 gallons of water. And this slide shows a water bill with that average amount. So on the left-hand slide, sorry, left-hand side, there are two green bars. And the first green bar is the water bill with our current rates. And adjacent to that is that same water usage bill with a 22% increase. And as you can see, the additional, the towns that, in Westford's area, that, that same usage of water, the bills are significantly higher. So even with that 22% increase, we're still pretty competitive with, with surrounding towns. Not that anybody, you know, wants an increase, but we still do have pretty, pretty good rates in, in Westford. And just real quick, to follow up on a question someone else had, the Water Department does have an emergency response plan to, to react to things like, you know, train derailments, spills, loss of sources, things like that.
Steve, do you want to add anything?
So just on Mark's last slide there, so that's the average annual water bill.
Correct.
For residential property here in Westford. Some of those communities have already reacted to their PFOS issues, and as a result, you're seeing the increases in their bills. Littleton recently constructed a PFOS treatment facility. Chelmsford and Acton are in the planning stages of conducting, of designing their facilities as well. So as you see, they've already reacted, and we're in the process now of reacting based on the information that we have from EPA and from the sampling that we've done of our own sources.
Okay. I just, before I open up the board, I have two clarifying questions. So how many PFAS structures do we need to, to build here in Westford?
We're looking at two. A treatment system at each of our existing plants, the Forge Plant and the Nutting Road Plant.
Okay, so two treatment centers.
Correct.
And then just a discrepancy. In the last slide that you put up, you said that the average, I think, residential rate with the 22% increase was $513. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. In the, is that, have you like recalculated your, your figures? Because in the presentation that I got in my packet, it said that the average residential rate with the 22% increase was going to be $542.
It's based on 8,200 cubic feet, which is the average. So it may have been a different.
Correct. There may have been 80, sorry, 8,400 feet, 8,400 cubic feet. So on this slide, it's 8,200 cubic feet.
You see the 800? All right. Yep, I do. I do. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Those are my clarifying questions. I have other questions, but let me open that up to the board. Anita?
Sorry, Eric, to make you both the slides back up, but the one that has the step increases 22%, 0%, 15%, going back another slide. Yeah. Yes, this one. Oops. Yeah. Could you talk a little bit about the rationale of 22%, then 0, and then 15%, and then 0, and those increases? And why that's just not sort of a gradual on every year? Because I feel like that could get confusing.
So administratively, it's quite a bit of work to increase rates every year and also notify residents. One of the things we're working with the rate increases is we're responding to the information that we have now. So, you know, as Mark said, we bid out our chemicals, for example, every year. You know, that typically happens around this time of year. The consortium meets usually in February. Those bids go out in March. But at that point, we've already essentially developed our budget for the year. So, so there are some factors that are going to change between now and town meeting that could impact that. But moving forward with the two 15% rate increases, we don't know necessarily what's going to happen with PFOS. So, you know, we, we're having a difficult time really recommending a rate increase in 2025, because we'll just be into the point of the pilot study and design. So we're not going to know really what our true rate, two true construction costs are going to be at that point. So, you know, we didn't feel that it was responsible to have a rate increase without knowing what those costs are. So, you know, that 15% is just an estimate right now. We're hoping to have a little bit more clarity by the time we get to 2026. And then same thing again in 2028. We're just going to be at the point where we're starting to understand what our operating costs are for those facilities after they've been constructed. So, you know, rather than have an increase without that information, once again, we're going to be reacting to it at the time. So that was sort of the rationale for it.
I wonder if it's possible to add, if this is going to another presentation, if this is going to town meeting or something, for people's awareness, to add like a footnote that explains that? Or just that you're evaluating this year, you're evaluating this year. So then people understand.
Other questions, comments? Tom, and then John?
I think this is a very well-constructed presentation. Nobody likes a rate increase, but I think, I think you've laid out the arguments very clearly. Are there programs? I guess there's two questions. One is, are there education resources to help residents who want to conserve and try to avoid the full effect of this rate increase? And the second is, is there programming for people who are on a fixed income who, who may see an additional, you know, it may not seem like a lot of money to a lot of people, but I know a lot of people on fixed incomes, $20 is a lot.
To answer the first question, yes. In fact, we, we developed a nice educational program a year or so ago with a local, not Girl Scout, what's the, maybe a Girl Scout. And it's, it's on the Water Department website, and a lot of the focus is on more sophisticated irrigation. And I think that's one of the approaches we're going to take. You know, people can still water, but there's ways to water in which you get more bang for the buck, you use less water, your lawn is still green, and it saves water. So yeah, we do have some educational resources, and they are on the website. I particularly recommend that one because we put a lot of work into it, and I think it's a pretty interesting presentation.
Well, for some of us who don't, who already don't water our lawns because we don't care whether they're green or brown, I think it might also be helpful if there is a public education that can be worked up about other ways that we can conserve water.
Sure.
In our community.
Also people that have.
I'm sorry, Larry, I know who you are. No problem having you talk, but just come to the microphone and tell us who you are, so the folks who are listening remotely can hear you.
Sorry about that. Yes. People who have.
Wait, you just have to tell everyone who you are.
Larry Pinaro, Business Manager.
Thanks.
TPW. I work side by side with Steve. People have irrigation systems. The people who put those in always recommend the best way to water. And typically, they say twice a week, you soak it, and you don't have to do it every day. So there are ways to conserve by just doing it a couple times a week. So check with your irrigation people, because they typically know how to conserve water. And there's certain grasses that will tolerate less, you know, doing well with less water, too. So that requires to redo your whole lawn. But there are types of grasses that work well, like zoysia grass and things like that.
We actually have zoysia grass at the Water Department. And irrigation can get very sophisticated, you know, following evapotranspiration rates and, and things like that. So there's, there's a bit of a science to it.
So I think sort of what's coming out of this is that perhaps the Water Department can work on an educational program, a document that can be made available to the community for ways to save water.
So with our new permit, there are going to be requirements as well for us to increase our level of public outreach and education. Currently, right now, we do a semi-annual newsletter, where we try to put out information to residents on water conservation. We have made investments into the system in the past couple of years through a fixed meter reading network, which allows us to read our meters more frequently and with a higher degree of resolution. So that, it also allows us, allows us to see what our smart meters are telling us essentially, which is, you know, do we have residents that have leak codes, high consumption that's beyond their normal usage? So it will allow us to reach out to our customers more proactively to let them know that they may be having an issue, and they may want to look into it before that bill adds up. One of the challenges is that we do bill quarterly right now. So if a resident does have a small leak, you know, it could be a number of days before, or a number of weeks, or even months before they realize that they have something going on. So, you know, we're going to continue to try to invest in technology so that we can keep our customers aware of the amount of water that they're using.
The second half of the question, any resources available for people who are facing hardship on fixed incomes, et cetera?
Yes, we are having internal discussions on that. We are definitely sympathetic to folks on fixed incomes who, you know, this, this increase will, will affect. We do take into consideration every case. I know that the town itself has some, some resources through the Council on Aging, but yes, we are developing some internal ways to handle those situations.
Yeah, Council on Aging and also the sustainability groups in town could be good allies in public outreach and communication around going alongside this rate increase.
And we, yes, we have worked with them in the past, too.
Yeah, we've looked at other programs as well, like the low-income water, Household Water Assistance Program. Unfortunately, it's geared right now just towards, you know, customers who have had hardships as a result of COVID. But I imagine, you know, as we move forward with new PFOS regulations, it's going to be a nationwide issue, and there's probably going to be some resources available to help offset the cost for some of our lower-income users.
Thanks.
Your big bump in cost looks like it happens in 2026. And my question is, you want 22% and your, and your surplus cash stays pretty healthy up to about 2026. Is any thought of delaying this 22% one more year? What would that do? And then if the EPA comes back and says 20 parts per trillion is okay, then.
If I could say one thing on that, the biggest impact is the debt for the $18 million construction. And if we don't start doing that now with that 22%, if we wait, it'll be like 37%. So we have to start now, because that's going to jump our debt service by over $1 million. So we have to have the revenue to basically pay for that and keep a $1 or $2 million reserve beyond the minimum. You see what I'm saying? If we don't do it now, we'll be looking at a 37% rate increase. But that's really what's driving it.
I think if the EPA was to come out with standards that are at 20 or greater, that really is going to change our entire conversation. I, I don't think it's very likely, unfortunately. And they're making it more difficult by keeping this a secret. It's more secret than the recipe for coke at this point. No one, no one really knows. But the industry does believe that we're looking at single-digit part per trillion standards. Like you said, if that doesn't come to, come to, that doesn't happen, then we're going to have a different conversation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, to Mark's point, if they establish a standard of 20 parts per trillion, you know, we're talking about, you know, an additional investment of $500,000 to $1 million in treatment at probably Country Road well alone. And then that's $17 or $18 million that we need for centralized facility goes away. But, you know, what we've heard from EPA and our partners at Mass Water Works is that it's going to be a single-digit standard. It's not a matter of if now, it's really a matter of when.
I notice Littleton's already done that. They've put a big investment in, in theirs already.
And we've, we've been cautious because of that. You know, our concern was, you know, really rushing out and building a facility that wasn't going to be adequate to meet whatever the standard was. So, you know, we've, we've been careful, and we really, in this instance, feel that it's better off to be reactive to what the standard is, rather than to go out and build a facility in anticipation, in anticipation of a standard that hasn't been developed.
Scott?
Yeah, I want to ask, I guess, John, pressure on timing, because, you know, two things, frankly. One is, we're looking at a permanent increase in rate because of a temporary increase in chemicals, right? Chemicals go up, and they come on being like gasoline, and they come back again. So we're assuming that the, that which we know is unlikely, but I can't yet plan for the worst case. But we're assuming, I think, worst case. But I guess more to the point, we don't have a statement yet. We don't have any engineering studies yet. So we're pushing through a rate increase, but there is no bond to finance. So if this thing starts July 1st with a rate increase, there's no bond to get to July 1st. So I'm really confused as to why, there's a question, you know, to find a bond that doesn't exist and what exists restably for, you know, another year. So the question is, how, how time are we giving?
So, you know, as I said, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We're expecting the standard basically any day. So we, we full well expect to have this, you know, by July 1st, have a standard. If we have that single-digit standard, we know, you know, we're building something in the range of $17 to $18 million. To your point on chemicals, you're correct, they are commodities. They do up, they do go up and go down. The last time we saw an increase of this nature was back in 2008. We saw the cost of potassium hydroxide increase almost 242%. So, you know, there is the potential that between now and July 1st, those, those prices could go down. It's unlikely, based on what we're hearing from our suppliers, but we're going to continue to monitor that over the next couple of weeks and months as we get through the bidding process. You know, the Water Commissioners, you know, we've had these discussions internally, and they're fully committed to reacting to whatever the, the markets tell us. So if we find that those costs, you know, within the next couple of weeks or months, do start to trend down, or they don't, you know, we don't realize a standard that high, then they are going to reconsider that increase.
I just, as a follow-up question to what both John and Scott just asked, is it possible to look at that 22% increase, recognizing that you do have to plan for the future, but, and since the, as John pointed out, the dropout, you know, comes in 2026, is it possible to take that 22% increase and implement it over the period of two years? So that you're also seeing what's coming? seeing what's coming down the pike, what isn't coming down the pike, and residents don't get hit with a 22% increase all at once?
So anything's possible. The only thing that I would caution is it does eat into our minimum reserve level. So it leaves us at a position of risk so that if something were to happen between now and, you know, when the, the next year, you know, we're going to need to come up with some sort of emergency funding to offset that. So, you know, that's something I think, you know, that you at least need to be aware of if we're going to consider alternatives.
We could look at that, but it would still require at least an 18 to 20% increase and then 8% for the next four or five years. So.
I'm sorry, explain, explain to me why.
Wanted to see.
Wait, no, let me finish my question. Explain to me. That's okay. Explain to me why if you spread the 22% out over two years, that then the next thing you know, I've got 32% over the next four years.
Because our expenses are going to go up to almost, you know, $6 million and we have to have enough revenue to cover that. And I looked at it by doing smaller increases for the next five or six years, and it still comes out to be 15, 18% the first year and then 8, 8, 8, and 9%. I mean, I would rather not have those type of increases every year because it makes it almost impossible to explain to people why their rates are doing what they are when they call up. And many people call up all the time. And, you know, at another town that I used to do this, we did it in five-year blocks. We'd set our rates for five years and then look at it for another five years. But this situation is totally different. It's a perfect storm because of PFAS, as well as our new permit is going to require us to pump less water. And you look at all these factors and the fact that it's been dry and we're not getting as much of our revenue during the summer months because that's when we get probably 60 to 70% of our revenue because people are irrigating and, and the climate change is an impact to that as well as the inflation. So all this hitting together has forced us into this situation. And I don't think going 15, 18% and then 8, 8, 8, 9% is the right way to go. And we don't really know exactly what it's going to cost on the construction. It could be 20 million. It could be, right now, it's 18 million, but two years from now, it could be 20, 22 million. So.
There's a certain amount of irony that people may be irrigating less and saving water and yet their water rates are going to go up. Scott has his hand up again.
Yeah, this, this, I guess, a thought, certainly, I would agree with Steve and his earlier presentation that it becomes long-term planning, the Water Department is, you know, one of the best in town in terms of, of, you know, funding, capital, and long-term needs. But it's nice to hear it all. You think this is 22%, this is 15, this is 15. You know, obviously, you've done a lot of planning. You've thought about what these costs are going to look like. But most of us in town have seen that, that thought process of, you know, thinking about where you expect a shot in the future. Because according to the night, if it's 15 in two years, and 15 again, that becomes, you know, pretty bad news pretty quick to people. So, you know, as you think through these plans, could you put together something on your webpage, pass town webpage, says here's, you know, what is, I guess, I agree PFAS, you know, I threw my own job of seeing, you know, what that looks like the cost. So I agree, it's going to be a problem for everybody, but for the educated community that's coming, that there's a cost to health. And, but what is that going to look like over the next, say, five, 10 years? Both as a one-year incremental hit that we're going to be looking at every so often. So I guess, of course, we're, I guess, sharing a vision, I don't know if it can be a complete concept of this, but as good you can make it through the education, perhaps coming.
Absolutely. We can put that together and we'll, we'll get it to the board as well for your next meetings that you have that information also.
Tom.
Member of Finance Committee, resident of Poly Road. I appreciate the work that has been put together in the presentation, but I am hearing a lot of, we don't know what the cost is going to be and we're putting this in, in the worst-case scenario. And I also appreciate that it's only, it's quote-unquote, only $100 a year for an average residence. However, $100 for water, $200 for electric, $200 for gas, $200 for taxes, it's going to add up really quick. When, and inflation is going up, our costs of living are not keeping up with inflation. So I do think this is going to have a big impact on residents. And I also do, I appreciate the fact that rates haven't increased in so many years. But that's hard to bank on too. I do think that a long-term plan of, you know, regular rate increases is a better way to go. I would also like to see that analysis of how, you know, smaller increases add up to be a bigger increase. So that's just kind of my observations and I do caution on, you know, looking at it as only $100 because $100, again, piled on, on top of everything else, has a big impact. Thank you.
All right. I have a bunch of comments and questions from the, our.
There's actually some Finance Committee members in the panel that might need to hug their hands up as well.
Oh, wait a minute, let me, thank you. Let me, let me check. Oops, wait a minute, I'm going to the wrong thing. Hang on a minute. On the panels?
Under attendees.
Under attendees, yeah. Oops, I don't see any.
I saw just a Finance Committee member with their hand up, so just want to make sure that we recognize any Finance Committee members that are remote as this is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
I know Christina Green has, has written a question that I was going to get to. So, and there she is, as I speak her name. Christina, do you, we'll promote you and would you want to ask your question or your comment?
Sure. So I'm curious as to what the impact is on the town's FY24 budget, because I believe at one of our recent hearings, I asked, and this rate increase was not, was not factored in. So I don't know if, I can't really see if Dan O'Donnell.
He's here. He is here, Christina.
Yes, okay.
And he's slowly making his way to the microphone.
So, hi Christina. So this is included in a budget that was submitted by the Water Department. It's where we're basically generating more revenue this year so they're able to bank their reserves in anticipation of these future expenses. So.
Other departments, so.
Other department chargebacks.
So what, I think the question is.
There's water, you know, expense lines in other departments. That's, that's what I'm asking about for FY25, sorry, 4, 4, 24.
Yeah, so overall, the, you know, the amount of water that departments pay is not a huge percentage of the budget, so they probably will be able to absorb this. If they cannot, we always have the ability to supplement or do budget transfers at the end of the year if it is a burden on departments. But overall, it shouldn't be that big of an impact.
Okay. Looking at some comments that we've got from our remote audience, Sue Thomas is happy to make herself available and work with you folks on conservation, irrigation, and landscaping alternatives. So I, why don't you connect with Sue Thomas, who is our Sustainability Coordinator? Let's see, next, can you do this question? Stephen Weber asks, at town meeting budgets are presented and are discussed and voted on. Why are these things like this water weight increase as well as other spending increases not discussed as part of the town meeting and the budgets? Actually, at town meeting, we go through the budget line by line for every department and line item and any resident that has a question about a particular line item or expense can ask a question at that point and during town meetings. So they are discussed. Next.
I can just add to that. The Water Commissioners meetings are public meetings and anyone who wishes to attend a Water Commissioner meeting when they discuss this can do so. And if you would like to sign up for news flashes to get those agendas, you can through our town website or view the agendas in the hall downstairs.
I think, did you have any, I don't think there were any others because I'm not seeing any others.
No, the group.
I think what I would like, I would like to ask you folks to do either at our next meeting or, yes, at our next meeting, because, yeah, either at our next meeting or the first meeting in March, is to come back and answer some of the questions that have been raised tonight. I think, you know, I hear what you're saying Larry, and I think we all do as a board in terms of the analysis that you folks have done in terms of how the increases are going to be implemented, how, you know, how big they are, et cetera. But I think it would be helpful for the board and the public to understand the thought process that you've gone through and how you've gotten, gotten to this point. So to put something together to explain that and help educate the public, I think would be helpful. And I think to do it in the context of a select board meeting is the most appropriate place to do that. And then you can post it on your website afterwards. So I will leave it to you to coordinate with Kristen in terms of when, you know, which meeting you want to come back to and when you get the information available. And Titus?
Yeah, Titus Palmer, I'm a Water Commissioner. And I'm speaking just for myself as an individual board member. But, you know, we have, we're a year and a half waited to see if this was a bump. Right, right now, I don't think any of us think it is a bump. I think it's going to stay high for a while. We're trying to be prudent, which has been our history. And one of the things I personally was worried about with doing more lower rate increase was kind of customer fatigue of rate increase year after year after year. I realize $100 a year is a lot for some people, but it's $100 a year versus many of the other utilities, which are, you know, 100, $200 every couple of months, it seems they're going up, or if you use fuel oil. So that's how I came to my belief that 22% in hopes that maybe in the future, the, any more increases could be lower. You know, that's how I got there. And I'm also, as an individual board member, very open to being responsive if the need doesn't arise. If the EPA comes to its senses and goes with a, you know, right now, they're talking about a limit that is so low labs can't detect it. So we won't even be sure we're at their limit. We just have to go as low as labs can test now. So, you know, if, if there is a reason to lower the rates in the future, it's something I individually am in favor of and I think the other members would at least consider because we're not looking to hoard money. We're not looking to anticipate crazy things. But, you know, like Mark said, any one of the things we worry about all the time, all through the year, can be a $2 million problem that comes from nowhere. So that's why I really feel strongly that 22% is the right number to go with. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, I think, you know, what will be helpful, I think, in terms of just, is further education for the public to understand you've reached that, that decision and you're comfortable with it and to help our public also be as comfortable with it. Dennis, you have your hand up and after that, we are going to move on. You're muted. Dennis, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
You sound good, Dennis.
All right. I just want to come to the aid of the Water Department for a minute because they're dealing with a situation that is kind of beyond their control. And this is very related to the interesting little issue and discussion we had about stormwater about three, four years ago. The, the whole problem, the root of this problem is the 2009 decision by the legislature to allow the EPA direct intervention and oversight of Massachusetts waterways. That can be easily fixed by having the legislature withdraw that jurisdiction anytime they want. Thank God for federalism. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Dennis. And I think that's a perfect note to end on. All right. We will see you back at a future meeting, okay? Thank you, gentlemen, for everything. I know you've worked really hard on this.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at our next item, which is a joint meeting with the FinCom to discuss options for the Cameron Senior Center HVAC system. And I guess Chris Karpinski, ah, there you are, is here to update us along with Jeff Goodwin.
That's correct.
To update us on this project.
Good evening and thank you for making the time to talk about Cameron. So a quick update, I know that we've talked about Cameron to this board before in the past. The air conditioning system at Cameron has been failing and that's been going on for a number of years. About a year ago, the town started a process to pursue an energy services contract to get that system replaced. And that number came back in the August timeframe and the town manager at that time did not like the number that came back. And so she placed a stop on that effort of exploring an energy services contract and then handed over to the permanent town building committee, the role of taking the project to a traditional public bid process and working to get a price for that approach to delivering a repair to the building. So that was September that Jeff Goodwin and Eric Hyderman and I started the process of taking this project to bid. So in the last four months, we've put together the team that you see. I don't know if Eric can put up the table that I presented, page two of the report. If not, I can just summarize it here.
Wait for it. It'll come in a minute.
The magic man behind the curtain. Yeah, right there. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. So we put together a large team to, to take this project to bid, understand all the various facets of this. And in particular, you can see the size of the team relative to the first effort. And in particular also, we have a cost estimator on board, even though we're setting this to public bid. The scope of the project is considerably larger than what was originally anticipated a year ago. Originally, with the energy services contract, it's basically a mechanical and some touch-up paint. But you see there that now we're figuring in the whole project team, the relocation costs, hazmat is an issue. The building needs some code compliance updates and other items too that are there. And also, a significant amount of additional design review has been done. So the team that we put together and including the OPM, Alicia Monks from CHA, which is, I believe she is with us this evening remotely, came up with an estimate of an eight-month duration construction project for, for this HVAC air conditioning upgrade and all the other items with an anticipated start in September of this year. So this, this whole project has been pulled together in the last four months and the construction documents and the bid specifications have all been completed and have been posted live just of last week. And so we already have contractors taking a look at it. So I hid the tougher news on the second page here. So Eric, if you could proceed to the next page. Thank you. So this is where the number is coming in. 3.8 million is what the cost estimator believes all this work that has been discovered, that has already been known before during the energy services contract and has been discovered since then, the last four months with the team that we have on board. That 3.8 has included in it two optional items. The, the bottom one there is roof replacement. If we're coming in with a crane to pull things off the roof, it's a good time to take a look at the roof and see if it needs to be replaced before we put other equipment back on there. And then through a process of value engineering, as we reviewed the design from a year ago, our mechanical engineer said there's a large number of pieces of HVAC equipment that were in the original scope that sort of scope crept a little bit, made the project bigger. And so we pulled those out as that 386K ancillary spaces equipment. That's for giving air handlers to things like closets, stairwells, the basement and such. And we didn't really think that if we're just trying to replace the air conditioning system in the building, that, that that particular item would, would add a lot of value to that goal. So again, you know, we're in the situation where we estimate the cost, but we had to calibrate that with reality. That reality will come March 10th when the bids start. calibrate that with reality, that reality will come March 10th, when the bids start coming in from people that wished to bid on this project. From a funding perspective, the funding that was approved before is still available, and it's that CBD there that I think is the major item for us discussed this evening. And so I can go into details of any other aspects of this if you wish, or answer any questions, just want to keep it at a high level.
Sure, appreciated. Jeff, do you have anything to add at this point?
No, I think Chris summed it up quite nicely, you know, the bottom line is, we've created a much more robust scope, a well-thought-out plan, and with all of our soft costs included, we're now looking that we're going to need to go back to town meeting and ask for an additional $1.9 million in funding for this project. As Chris mentioned, there are some bid alternate costs included in the project, as he said, those supplemental units, there are about 20 units in total that add up to about $385,000 worth of additional costs. You know, we are, we're including them as a bid alternate, but yeah, at this point, we're presenting the information we have currently from the cost estimator. We'll have firm bids in hand on March 10th, and I think we're at the point, we're just looking for some additional guidance from, from the select board and finance committee as to how to best proceed with this.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? John?
I'm a little bit concerned, when did you learn that the estimate was 3.8 million? Did you go out to bid, understanding that the estimate was twice what you had?
So you're talking about the current?
Well, you're out to bid right now for the project.
That's correct. We have a cost estimator as well as part of this project, and that cost estimator put together, in addition with the OPM, all the soft costs of three, total to 3.8.
That's not the bid.
What's the bid price? Oh, we don't know, okay.
We don't know because it's just gone out to bid.
Construction cost is 2.9.
Okay, 2.9.
Right, these are just estimates that the cost estimate put together, and then we wait to get the bids back to see what happens and where they fall.
Reality, yes.
Either above or below.
Yes.
Okay.
Anita? So the, so if you have to go back to town meeting for 1.9 additional, does that include that, those optional?
That's correct, yeah, we worst case it.
Yep.
Okay.
Tom?
I guess I had a similar question, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of enthusiasm for heating and cooling, the stairways and the closets, so we're really looking for 1.5? Is that a better way to think about it?
We wanted to see that the numbers would come back from the bid process, because, again, that was another estimate, and then just present that information, and either allow this board and/or the public to decide at town meeting.
Okay. So I guess the questions are, are there any alternatives to doing this? Is this something we have to do, and we just now understand it's costing more than we would like? And then I guess, different pathways, maybe this question for you, Dan, different options we could proceed, what are the different mechanisms one could use to, to fund this if, if we chose to do this?
So currently, we have this in the debt follow schedule, we have a $2 million placeholder starting in FY '25 because the construction will occur over FY '24. So at 20-year bond at 4%, we're looking at about $142,000 per year, just for the supplemental payment, about $2 million. So if we have bids come back cheaper than 1.5, we're looking in like the 110 range, 115 range.
Okay, very helpful.
And just, just to clarify real quick, I don't want to misrepresent when we're referring to these units, these 20 units that are a bid alternate. Currently, they're a little redundant on top of the heating plant that we have and will still be operating. Down the road 20 years, 30 years, if we get into a situation where our boilers need to be replaced and we're, we're inching closer towards our clean energy goals down the road, those units could be helpful if we decide to make a complete switch to electric heat pumps at that time. So it's, it's just something to consider, that although they might be redundant or superfluous now down the road, if we need to replace the boiler plant, they, they could be of good use to us at that point, so.
Yeah, and to that point, even removing these optional units, these are just the terminal units that are in those ancillary spaces, all the infrastructure from the heat pump plant throughout the building is sized to include these, so either these could be added now or added at a future date, or, you know, as our engineer says, technology could evolve, and then a different design would be appropriate, so it's hard to predict at this point what's best for the future.
Scott?
Yeah, so we have had a history of, we renovated buildings, say, you know, took one, and then went to them, three years, five years, we had systems not working like we thought they would. So without talking about, for 20 years, for 30 years, to put heat pumps, what do we have in terms of, I guess, guarantees or warranties? What's the expectancy of this project? Because it's not that old start date, and I get to go to change, but we're, I think, engaging in some ritual thinking about which we're going to change this, probably get a handle on how long, what span really is going to be for this thing.
So the, the key thing to think about is, with the building, and I won't go into too many details, being an engineer, I know you guys are laughing, I'll try to skirt around the details, but the, it's the fluid that you use throughout the building to move heat around, and in the olden days, people used water, and in recent days, people use refrigerant. When the center was redone in 10, 10 years ago, a refrigerant-based system was chosen, what's known as a VRF system. So that was actually a first-generation VRF system, it no longer is supported, that's why we're here and unable to repair it at this time. And there are also a couple of other faults, too, that the design of that system wasn't done very well to interface with the existing boiler plant, and quite honestly, the construction of that system isn't quite up to snuff. So those three things have kind of come together to make a short lifetime for this current system. And so with respect to the, the other part of your question, Scott, the work that we did with the engineer a year and a half ago, both with the permanent town building committee and the clean energy committee, we thought about Cameron from a 50-year timeframe, not just, you know, for the next number of years, and, and we worked with the engineer to bring it back to a hydronic-based distribution system within the building, because the most complicated thing to this project is all the infrastructure that's in all the walls and ceilings and basement to, to move that heat around, or move that coolness around. And, and that, but at the same time, we want to leverage the latest of technology and also make it easy for technology to be updated in the future. So this project that we have scoped here does the work to put a hydronic distribution system throughout the building, that's the hard part, and then puts the high-tech fancy stuff in very easy-to-modify areas, it's on the roof and in the basement, and that's it. So 15, 20 years from now, when the heat pump needs to be replaced, when it's at the end of its service life, it's just touching the ceiling, sorry, touching the roof and the basement, everything else throughout the building does not need to be touched again. Our engineer sees 30- to 50-year timeframe for all the hydronic distribution items that are throughout the building.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, you had your hand up, but now it's down, do you, are you all set?
Yeah.
Great, okay, thanks. Anita?
I'm sure you already know the answer to this, but I'm just going to confirm for everybody, you keep your eye out for grant opportunities, right, and any sort of like funding, potential funding that can support this project?
Yes, I've been working with Sue Thomas, our sustainability coordinator, to look at MassSave certain programs that are available, reimbursements for installing, you know, this sort of equipment. It sounds like, for what we're specifically specking, those reimbursements aren't available right now, but it sounds like later this year, there could be reimbursements available, and with the amount of tonnage that we're putting in for cooling, they could be substantial.
Okay, thanks.
Tom?
Just, just, thank you, Chair. So with regards to what we're deciding here tonight, I appreciate the update, very valuable information, we've got an important facility that takes care of our seniors, it's failing in its current state, and we have to do something, and it sounds like this is our best recommendation, so.
And also emergency shelter.
Yeah, thank you for that. So it, it sounds like we, I'm wondering if there's something more complicated here than us needing to be thinking in our future budgeting, to have the number that Dan just brought up in terms of annual interest expense for the bond to consider, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of options here for us to, like a Plan B, a Plan C, we, we sort of have to fix a failing system and just get ready to pay for it, is that?
That's correct.
Is that what this meeting's about?
Yeah, we, we looked, you know, boiled the ocean to look at other alternatives a year and a half ago, and there wasn't anything that was compelling that probably wouldn't get us back in the same situation in short order.
Okay.
So I think, you know, this has all been very valuable and helpful, and thank you for coming here tonight. I think probably there isn't a whole lot we can do right now, that the next step is really to wait for the bids to come back in.
That's correct.
In March, and I suspect that once the bids come in and you open them, we will see you again.
Hopefully with smiles.
I hope so.
fingers crossed.
But thank you both, and everybody who's helped you put this together, and all the hard work that's, that's gone into this, very much appreciated.
Thank you all, thank you.
All right, we are now at our 7:45 PM item, which is a discussion regarding Pay as You Throw program for solid waste and recycling, which involves Eric Heidemann, our assistant town manager, Dan O'Donnell, the finance director, and Ken Teal, who's chair of our recycling commission. So I know, for anybody who doesn't see, Eric is here, he's in the back in the control room, running everything for us tonight, but I'm sure we'll be able to chime in when needed. But Dan, if you want to run, go ahead and run through this, I think the last time that this was on the select board's agenda was back in 2021.
About two years ago, yes.
So two years ago, so if you can sort of tell us where we are two years later.
Absolutely, so we were asked to come back with an update to our Pay as You Throw options. Basically, I'm going to talk about where we are now financially, what our current programs are, Eric's going to discuss from the back room, the grants that we applied for, and then a couple of the options that could be considered by the select board.
Great.
Just wait, no, no. Right, so here's where we're currently at, we use an estimate of 8,900 households in town, we currently have weekly solid waste collection and bi-weekly recycling, the recycling is partially automated, the solid waste is all manual. Currently, we have a limit of three barrels per household for solid waste and no limit on recycling. When we look at the, the numbers for this year, the average cost per household is about $235 for the year. So here's a graph, because we love graphs here, it shows the history of the solid waste recycling expenses going back to fiscal year 2008. I want to point out the, starting in FY '17, we have a maroon section on top, those are the recycling processing fees that were implemented in FY '17 after the SORD Act came into play and China stopped accepting our recyclables. So you can see it's been up and down throughout the years, and most recently in FY '22, we did raise $39,000 from rebates for that, but the market has since swung the other way, which we'll get to in a second here. And here's a map that Mast EP puts out, it shows all the communities in Massachusetts that participates in either the Pay as You Throw or Smart Communities, which is available on the website. All right, for FY '23, our solid waste budget is currently $744,000 for the collection contract, our tipping fees are at $93.60 per ton, and we're projected $664,000 on the year, which is below budget, less than we thought, because the overall tonnage has gone down. So our overall projected 23 cost is just over 1.4 million. So for '24, it's the last year of our contract with ACME, it's $774,000 for collection, the disposal fees are going up three and a half percent to just over $97, and the overall budget for next year is 1.52 million. That's about $114,000 increase from FY '23. So for recycling, our curbside collection contract is $531,000 in FY '23, again, next year is the last year for the contract. So the processing fees, we're on target to hit $144,000 for this year against a budget of $45,000, so we had brought this up during the, the budget hearings. So what we're doing to, and the reason for it is because the mixed paper and cardboard markets both crashed, starting in August of this year. So we're, we have a placeholder for a $20,000 supplemental at the annual town meeting, and we're recommending having a budget transfer authorized by the finance committee and select board in, in May or June to transfer money from the solid waste budget to the recycling budget to cover that shortfall. So the, the savings in solid waste is almost identical to the, the shortfall we have in recycling, but we'll, we'll track that over the next few months. Also, we have a fuel surcharge in the recycling contract of about $25,000, which we did not have last year, so that was not budgeted. So our overall cost for '23 is just under $700,000 for the recycling contract. Now here's a chart we, we have for the recycling processing fees. As you can see, the July, we were earning $9.71 per ton, and then the market crashed in August, we ended up paying $40 per ton for recycling costs, and it, it's about $75 in January as of right now, so that's where we're tracking about $144,000 for the year. At this point, I hand off to Eric for the, the grant summaries.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? All right, great. So as Dan mentioned, I'm just going to go over kind of the grant summary. One second, we're having a little feedback. How's that?
Better.
Okay, great. So we did get, we were successful in obtaining two grants, and I'm going to, got to go over the first two, and then there's actually a third one that's still out there that we're going to find out about hopefully next month. So first, we have the Mast EP Pay as You Throw grant, we were approved for $267,000 in reimbursable expenses. The grant has different tiers on eligibility based on the structure of the program that the town approves. So for example, if we were to have one barrel free, we would only be eligible for $10 per household or $89,000 max. If we have all Pay as You Throw bags with nothing free, we'd get $20 per household. And if we go with their model that they're pushing the hardest, which is the 135-gallon automated trash cart, plus Pay as You Throw bags, we would be eligible for $30 per household. We actually already got an extension on this grant, but it, so we have to fully expend it by December 31st of this year. The second DEP grant was a curbside recycling grant, so we were approved for $93,450. This grant can be used to offset cost of purchasing carts. So the grant funds do have some limitations, they're only available if the town, if the town limits solid waste collection per household to 35 gallons, or if we require all solid waste to be placed in Pay as You Throw bags. And again, the same date applies to this one, which is December 31st of this year, where we have to expend all the funds. Now this one that's out there, this is nonprofit, the Recycling Partnership, they're located in Washington DC, but they do provide recycling toter grants to municipalities, so we do anticipate receiving an award of $97,900. The gentleman that I've been working with informed us that he just wanted to get some feedback from the board in terms of if the town may be moving forward before they bring this through the approval process with their board. So depending on what happens tonight, this may be approved as early as next month. So the organization, you know, as, as I just mentioned, sorry, I don't want to repeat that. So in terms of a summary, you know, without a commitment of a start date, and the expenditure of all grant funds by the end of its calendar year, the Mast EP has already made us aware that they're going to rescind the grant awards, because they plan to make them available for other communities. The big thing that we're going to kind of hone in on is they had three big questions for the board tonight. Is the select board in favor of the project? Was there a vote taken to approve this new program, and hasn't implementation date been identified? So the DEP is really looking for us to get back to them with answers to those questions, so hopefully tonight we can get some of that direction. So the town is highly encouraged to turn back our grants proactively, if for whatever reason we think we're not going to be able to expend the funds by the deadline that was shown. It will, it potentially could impact our future grant applications if we don't proactively return the funds. So we, working collaboratively with both Dan and Kristen, we did come up with some different options for consideration, but I will please note, there are so many different variables to Pay as You Throw, and each city and town in Massachusetts actually does it very differently. So option one that we came up with would be Pay as You Throw bags for all solid waste, requiring all residents to purchase Pay as You Throw bags for all of their solid waste that they throw out. They may be used, allowed. They may be allowed to use their existing barrels if automated collection is not pursued. And we'll talk a little bit about automated collection in a minute. The Select Board would set the price of bag based on the desired revenue target, whatever that may be, whether it's funding the full budget of the program or a partial piece of it. There would be no change under this option of how we currently collect recycling. So without reading all of these, big takeaways for pros, and this would be eligible for 178,000 in the grant that I mentioned earlier, so not the full amount, but at least a piece of it. In terms of bags, you know, concern that was brought up before was, why are we buying more bags? It seems a little redundant and not too environmentally friendly. But in fact, these bags are highly recommended by the DEP and the vendors. We inquired regarding having stickers or tags, and they just said that in other communities where they've tried that, it just wasn't that successful. Also, the bags are easily distributed and sold through an OSD statewide contract, and the bags are typically made from 35% to 50% recycled material. So some cons, obviously, buying bags, no one's going to be excited about that. This program would require some additional staffing resources to manage it. And one problem is, we would still continue to rely on our solid waste vendor to enforce our compliance with the program, which is how we operate today. And this specific option wouldn't set us up for automated collection. You know, we're being told by the DEP that several communities aren't even getting bids if they're doing manual collection. So it's almost feeling like the market is pushing us towards fully automated, and maybe something to consider on our next contract, which for both solid waste and recycling will be up in FY25 at the beginning of it. I'm going to let Dan kind of give a little explanation on this chart here.
Sure, this spreadsheet, so that's right in my purview. So we want to have some options for the Select Board to look at, just looking at the, you know, percentage target of the overall solid waste budget that we wanted to raise through sale of bags and pay-as-you-throw. So we use 100%, 75%, 50%, and 25% as the targets. And as in the fourth column, you can see the resident price per bag. If we want to raise 100% of the cost of the solid waste collection fees, it'd be about $1.65 per bag. If, you know, if it's at 75%, it's $1.30 per bag. If it's at 50%, 50% is 95 cents per bag, and if we want to raise 25% of that budget, 60 cents per bag. We have to factor in the cost of the bag, which Eric and I did contact the vendor on OSD contract, and he quoted 20 cents per bag. So the net revenue from that is what would be covering the all or portion of the solid waste costs.
Thanks, Dan. So next we go on to option two, which is standardized carts. So in this model, we would provide residents with 135-gallon standardized cart for solid waste. We would require all solid waste to be put in pay-as-you-throw bags. Potentially, one option, I think it got brought up by somebody who emailed me, certainly the first barrel could be without pay-as-you-throw bags, it just depends on what works as IRAs for the structure of the program. And then lastly, in terms of getting to automated collection, we'd also have to address recycling. So our previous contract, I believe three contracts ago, about 50% of our residents have 64-gallon wheeled carts for recycling. The Recycling Commission thinks that that's probably the accurate number, but I don't know if we have our data on that. So with this idea, we would either have to provide another 50% of the town 64-gallon recycling carts, or we would have to move to 96-gallon recycling carts for 100% of the town. So we just wanted to do some math here. We used 8,900 households. We think that number's a little high, but we just wanted to have some extra contingency figures in there for our calculations. But certainly, there's going to be a lot of variables in the math that's shown tonight. So what we're seeing here is $38 per cart, and actually Christine Agreen from the Finance Committee pointed out to me that some of these prices that we pulled from OSD statewide contract are expired. So it's going to be a little bit more, but we certainly can give updated figures. So with this one, I'm minusing the 267 from the Mass DEP grant. Again, that's going to be per household, so there's some variables here. But this gives you a rough idea, but the town capital required would be 71,200 just for the solid waste. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we would have the choice of going with either 64-gallon or 96. But since the town does bi-weekly recycling, it makes more sense to go with 96 gallons, because frankly, 64 gallons for a household every other week simply sometimes isn't enough. We've found that 96 is more of the standard. So again, we did some rough calculations here. So if we did try to do the 64-gallon model to do the other 50% of the town, we think we'd have capital appropriation required of roughly $8,900. And then with 96, again, to set us up for fully automated with larger containers, we anticipate a capital appropriation requirement of roughly 275,000. So what's the pros of this model? So really, this is Mass DEP's number-one model. We talked about the OSD statewide contract for bags. Actually, it's really great, they take a lot of the logistics out of the hands of the town, and they will direct ship our bags to vendors wherever we decide a town is going to sell them. Fully automated collection, we do anticipate, will have some contractual savings in the future, but it was hard to really come up with those figures. As I mentioned, our current solid waste contract and recycling contract expire at the end of FY24. We do think that if we did go with the 96, so long as there wasn't an issue with the trucks, there is a possibility that those old 64-gallon ones may still be used in addition to the 96, just rather than seeing them get disposed. So in terms of cons, you know, I mentioned the capital appropriations that would be required of 71,275. Again, those are rough numbers, but just something to put some figures to it. You know, residents may want to dispose of existing barrels. Again, if they can use them for recycling, that may not be a problem. And the either issue with the 64 gallon is, again, we don't have a lot of great records in terms of which house has them and how many they have. So the logistics of actually distributing the carts would be problematic. So other considerations, I kind of went over the first one. But if we tried to roll out pay-as-you-throw before our contracts expire, we did leave some language in both of them that allowed us the option to negotiate with the vendors. But we don't know what those operational cost increase might be if we try to roll this out, say, in the middle of this year or in FY24. So those would be figures we'd have to figure out. So in terms of timing, you know, this isn't just my opinion, but the DEP has really told us that a lot of towns that roll out pay-as-you-throw, they actually tie it to their contract start dates, and they actually work to have the vendor perform a lot of the logistics on behalf of the town, so we're not taking it all in-house. So just something to consider. And lastly, I already touched on this, it may require some additional town staff and resources. Dan, do you want to go over bulk items?
Sure, so bulk items such as, you know, we sell tickets in the town clerk's office that once a month, they come out and collect the bulk items, whether it be a sofa or something, some other household good. And basically, have the revenue history up here for the past four years, or three years, and halfway through this year, where we've been raising between 20,000, 25,000 per year. In FY23, the mattress ban actually took effect on November 1st, so we should anticipate a slowdown in sale of these, the bulk items. So right now, we're currently selling for $5 per item, and the bulk items such as the white goods, like a washing machine or something, is going for $30 per item. One other consideration would be to increase this from $5 to $10 per item. It should increase revenue by approximately $19,000, $20,000 per year. And it's been recommended by Mass DEP for several years to do so. The con to this is that we could see an increase in illegal dumping, where people try to avoid payments.
So one big piece of this, obviously, is public outreach. So we just wanted to give some examples of different opportunities where we could try to educate our population about this program and something we might be exploring in the future. So we just mentioned the street tree planting tree, the town manager newsletter, social media, town website, other meetings. So again, these are just to reiterate the questions that the DEP is looking for some input on. And I just want to make sure I give some credit to the Recycling Commission. They actually did a really detailed report on pay-as-you-throw, and it was included in the packet. So if anyone wants to check that out at home, it is available. And with that, questions?
Thanks, Eric. Before I go to questions, Ken Teal, who is the Chairman, Chair of the Recycling Commission, I just wanted to ask you, Ken, do you have anything to add or any comments?
Oh, sure, Andrea, thank you very much for giving me the chance to do that. We appreciate the work that was done in the presentation by Eric and Dan. What we have talked about as a Western Recycling Commission is really, this is not a silver bullet. No program is the silver bullet, it's not the magic answer. What we really need to do, and we believe strongly can be done, is we need to encourage our residents that we need to reduce the amount that we put in trash, and we need to actively do that. That means that we need to look at refusing, not bringing something into our community that we can't deal with, reducing, reusing, recycling, and minimizing it so that you get down to the minimal amount of trash. One of the things I've discovered on coming back to the Recycling Commission, and I was there before, we went to curbside recycling, and so I took almost a 30-year sabbatical before I came right back to be actively on the commission, is the amount of opportunities there are to dispose of waste that we would otherwise throw into the trash and increase that cost to our community. There are many wonderful options, and I try to avail myself of all of them. And we, as a commission, need to do a better job of communicating that to everybody and to, you know, making sure that they understand the best ways to do them. So Andrea, that's what I wanted to say, and I appreciate the time to do that.
Thanks, Ken. All right, before I turn to the audience and folks, questions and comments from the board? Anita, and then John?
Do you or Eric happen to know if these bags are biodegradable?
I defer to Eric on that one.
I know they're 30 different.
I actually can't answer that, Anita, but we simply can find out and let you know.
Okay, I was just curious. And then something else that's sort of, that I realized was sort of missing from this presentation, and I appreciate that you went through all of it again, I know it's really complicated and going through these numbers and everything. But I was trying to figure out what the cost would be per household, right? If we were doing 50 cents per bag, 1 35-gallon, which is something, I think of what I have at home, 35-gallon bin takes about three trash bags. So three trash bags a week, if it's 50 cents, would be, for the whole year, it would be about $78 a year per household. If we'd had a dollar per bag, it would be about 156, right, you just double that. And so I just wanted to kind of put that into context, because the presentation is very thorough, but it's looking at town costs and savings for us. But we have to think about what we're adding on to the households after we've already just talked about water, too. So just adding that in there. But I thought this was really thorough. And I just wanted to confirm, to make sure I was following everything correctly, that there's no option that where we can apply both grants that we've been approved for? It seems like it's one or the other, is that correct?
No, they actually can both be applied. The recycling ones are actually reimbursable on a per household. So I believe, I can double check, but I think it's $15 per household for one, and one's $20, and then an extra dollar for education and outreach to actually give us some funds for that as well.
Okay. Thanks. John?
Well, we spend over $2 million on both right now. And if we go to pay-as-you-throw, and we start paying that, what happens to the budget? Where does that $2 million go? How much of that, you know, we've got the grants that are really aimed toward the bins, and 35 gallons is not that much, but it's aimed toward the bins. But it still leaves what we have in the budget. What happens to that? Because we're going to start just adding on to that another fee, paying for the trash.
Right, so a lot of other communities have a solid waste enterprise that they set up, and then any revenue that comes in from the sale of bags goes to offset the costs for the collection. So it would work like the water department with the, you know, user rates and whatnot, and to pay for the water treatment, so. But you're correct, the grants are one-time money coming in to pay for the barrels, and then they're gone, and then we're moving forward with the operating costs.
So what would the average taxpayer see different than, I mean?
Eric, could you bring up the chart that has the 100%, 75%? I think that will help aid in the conversation.
Sure. Sorry about that.
All right, so on this chart, we did some reverse engineering from the analysis that Shrewsbury did. They just repriced the cost of their bags back in 2018, I believe. And the number of bags used per household in Shrewsbury was about 2.3. So using that figure as a basis, if we were to go and try to fund 100% of the solid waste cost, it would be about $1.65 per bag, times 2.3 bags per week, times the 52 weeks, which comes out to $198 per year for the typical household.
Anita, no, that's okay, I assume you have a follow-up question.
Well, something I was thinking about, what's the current process for the recycling toters that we have now through the town? That are all housed at Ellen Hardy's house? How, what's that, what's that process? How do we buy that, where are those funds coming from?
Ken? I think Ken is the Chair, can you?
Since they live in my garage.
Yeah, sorry about that, I couldn't find my little hand to put on there, so I used my own. What happens right now is, it's basically down through Ellen Hardy, Ellen Hardy stores them in her garage. She charges $55 per container. So people will come to her house to pick them up, they'll have a sticker on them for recycling. And that's the process, so she's a volunteer who does that on her own.
And Ellen, Ellen is actually here, Ken, so I don't know, Ellen, if you'd like to add to that?
Anita seems to still have a question, so why don't you ask that, and I'll address it.
How do we, how do we acquire them in the first place?
We order them through the state bid process, through the company Cascade, and we do that through a purchase order, we do it through Samantha, I let her know when we're out. We buy them 100 at a time. And the money that we have raised, Anita, from charging $60 per toter for the residents, is a recycling fund. The money comes in and it goes out to pay for it. So residents send a check to the town hall for $60, I pick them up every Friday. I call people and tell them they can pick them up in my driveway, and out they go. And we make about $1.50 on each one, I think the bid price for the state is $58. We charge 60, so we make a little bit of money. I have a couple of other comments to make, but I'll wait until Tom asks his question, thank you.
Thank you.
So as to the question, you know, are people interested in pursuing this? So there's two things that have bothered me for a while. One is the fact that if the waste cost is going up faster than 2.5% to prop 2.5% limit, it's gradually eating into other services. So each year, you know, we're getting less service because the trash costs and waste costs are going up. And I think that that's, I think that's a concern for me and a problem. And I think this, I'm not necessarily in favor of totally offsetting the full existing waste budget onto the taxpayer. I think there's a lot of middle ground choices you could make, but at least then you begin to have a mechanism so that as prices go up, we're not, you know, cutting back on other services to make room for trash. And the other thing, which Eric was kind enough to provide me earlier today, is that our neighbors that are on pay-as-you-throw generate substantially less waste per resident. And I think there's just a sustainability argument that says we need to be thinking long-term. And in both, yes, doing the education that Ken mentioned, I think part of this program would need to be a lot of outreach and education on how to reduce waste and other places you can take the waste. But certainly, the economic incentive is a big part of it. And really, all of the communities that neighbor us that are pay-as-you-throw communities have a lot less waste per resident. And I think we need to be embracing this for sort of budget management and sustainability reasons. I think the 2025 timeline is a better timeline. I think even though it means that we would have to... even though it means that we would have to return the grants proactively that expire at the end of this year, I don't see how we would have the right public conversation in between now and the end of this year and have all the decision-making that we would need. Others may have other opinions about that timeline, but I think there's more discussion to be had with the town than we're going to be able to accomplish in the next, you know, nine months from standing start.
Before I get to you, Ellen, Scott has his hand up. So, Scott?
Yes, Tom kind of hit upon my thinking, which is that, I mean, we're taking a tax service that you get currently as part of your taxes, and we're saying we're going to take that away to make you pay for it, which is also called a override by default. So, what if we don't, I'm not sure this goes through the town meeting process, which I think is the point I'm hinting at, but just to be clear, you know, we have to go through a town meeting process to make this a town decision, not a second-tier decision. And I wind up, you can't simply can't commit on February 15th because it's a county decision before that and can't be before that. So, I guess my, you know, the first question is, you know, do we want to move forward? Well, maybe. But do we want to commit? The answer is no. I can't good conscience commit that moment in town's, you know, wills.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. Ellen Hardy, I've been fighting this little battle since 1988, when we started the recycling program here in Westford. And I thank you, Tom, for your comments, because this really does have to be done deliberately and slowly. I think what we're dealing here with a Pay as You Throw at this time is we're dealing with a symptom and not the disease. Just as a basic element, you know, what is trash? We let people put couches out by curbside, and that's trash? It probably isn't. It probably is the homeowner's responsibility to get rid of their couch and not send it to a furnace, or an incinerator, where we are paying by ton for that. So I think a real basic conversation about, you know, why did we open the dump in the 1930s? And the reason was to get rid of garbage. It was a health issue. And what Westford and other towns throughout the world have become are the town feels that it's responsible for getting rid of every worldly good that comes into every household in Westford. And I personally don't think that's the government's responsibility. The education to tell people that they must take less items into their home, and if they throw them out, it is their responsibility, it's just like, they bought it, they have to pay to get rid of it, not through the town, but through calling Got Junk, 1-800-JUNK, all of those companies that are in that business. To me, that's a homeowner expense. And I think it's a really good conversation that we need to have in the next two years to define what the town's role is in this, and what the homeowner's role is, because it's a huge conversation. And I don't think we've had that. The Recycling Commission, every recycling guide tries to make the points that Ken has so eloquently stated, which is first, you have to reduce. We haven't done it enough, but if we do, I truly think that we can get the amount that people are putting out at curbside to be low enough that we won't have the huge expenses, Tom, that you're talking about. That shouldn't be such a big part of our budget. So, I urge you to put this off for the time it takes. The Recycling Commission has not seen this presentation that was made tonight as a commission, and I think they should and have that discussion so they can have their input. So, please don't vote on this to support it tonight. Let's take the time that we need and do it as a town with the voters involved. And as Westford always does, we'll do it right. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Tom?
Tom Flamm, Holly Road, member of Finance Committee, speaking only as an individual. To Tom's comments about eating into the Prop 2.5, I strongly oppose shifting from tax rate to fees to avoid Prop 2.5, because that's just a very slippery slope. You know, as a parent in the school system, I pay a lot of fees. And I know this is a question that goes back at least 10 years to when I was attending town meeting as a staff member. You know, and those fees can be increased every year, every 10 years by 22%, you know, whatever it is. You know, so I just urge us to be very intentional. And, John, I think you were asking about the impact to the taxpayer. I would hope that if we do go to a Pay as You Throw, the tax base does see a reduction, and not just a replacement of that amount and reallocated elsewhere, but actually a reduction to offset the impact on a household. I do have some concerns about buying bags, because there are certainly cases that we would be double-bagging trash. You know, I know we use bags in our bathrooms for specific reasons. And that would be double bags. So now I'm paying for two bags to get rid of trash. So, just, there are certainly things that I do think we need to be, again, very intentional and maybe put that pause in implementation. Not the pause in discussion. I definitely think discussion needs to happen, and I think it needs to be a strategic discussion amongst all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I think, you know, first of all, a couple of things. I do not think that we can respond to the Mass DEP questions by tomorrow. I think, oh, actually, before I say anything, Eric, you have your hand up. So, did you want to add anything?
Oh, thanks, Andrea. I was just going to let the board know. So in terms of those three grants, there is pretty high likelihood that we could get the Pay as You Throw grant again in the future. It is my Mass DEP's favorite program, so I have a feeling those funds won't be going away. And then the recycling partnership one is also a rolling grant. The only one we stand a chance to lose is the recycling cart grant. They have informed us that that may go away in the future, but the other two we likely could get again.
Thanks, Eric. That's helpful. So, as I started to say, I don't think we can answer DEP's questions by tomorrow. So, I think that's kind of the answer to that question. And, Tom, you actually eloquently expressed which, what I was thinking, is that I think this, as you said, this is a long discussion, and it's a discussion that involves a lot of different people and a lot of different communities, and at the end of the day, also involves all of our town and our residents. And, you know, granted, we may lose the grants that are out there by the end of the year, although it sounds like from Eric, at least two of them may still be available a year from now. But, you know, I don't think we should rush into accepting grants just because they're out there without giving the kind of thought and consideration that needs to be done in these situations. So, I think the sense I'm getting from the board and from, you know, from the Recycling Commission is that, you know, this is the beginning of a discussion, not only about Pay as You Throw, but about recycling in general, reuse, reducing, letting people know that, you know, there are other options to get rid of your couch rather than putting it out on the sidewalk, and along with other, you know, materials, you know, mattresses that no longer can be accepted, where they go, what do we do with those, you know, clothing and fabric that no longer is supposed to go in your recycling. So I think that it's a really big discussion that we need to have, and it's a more, it's a broader discussion than just as Pay as You Throw. And I think, you know, Ken, you know, I think you and also our Sustainability Committee, I think one of, you know, I think we're going to look to you to do a lot of, you know, to help us, to partner with us, and to lead, you know, sort of the educational component of this as we move forward. So, those are my thoughts and comments. Anybody else? Yeah, Kristin?
So, I understand that the board is not ready to make a decision tonight, but if we could make a decision at a future point in time of whether the board would like to return the grants or not, that would be helpful for us as staff to communicate that. So...
Especially because it sounds like that if, that we look better if we return them.
So I understand if you're not ready to make that decision tonight, but if we could do that at a future meeting, if you're not.
I guess to that point, I, so I don't think it's realistic that we could take these grants, because I don't think we're going to have, you actually have to dispose, use the funds by the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't have a problem. I think we should, I hope we have a timeline to move some, some sort of series of steps on this issue, because I think it's really important. But in terms of the grants, I at least would be ready to suggest that we return them, because I don't think there's a way we can responsibly use them. I don't know if other people want to take more time or not, but that's my opinion.
I think I'm ready to do that, too. I think we need to set up a program in our own pace to get this done. I mean, I like some of the ideas, but I would look, you know, toward making this thing a little bit initially revenue-neutral versus adding on to the taxpayer budget or burden, because we keep, we're adding some major things as we go along in the near future. So, to me, I think we ought to return it, say thank you very much. We'd like to entertain it again later, but have a program that we, that we want.
Yeah. I mean, I agree with everyone else, but I guess I also want to understand what are our next steps, I guess, as a community? Who's going to be working on it? It sounds, you know, obviously, the Recycling Commission is going to be very involved in the leadership of it, but are we putting together, dare I say, a work group, a task force? Like, how are we, I want to make sure we're like moving forward.
I think maybe we can take that discussion offline.
Okay.
As opposed to tonight. Okay. And I also agree with all of you folks as I'm prepared to return the grants. Scott, are, Scott, are you prepared to return the grants? Do you have any other?
I was prepared to, yes.
Okay.
So, that was my comment. I think, again, we can't keep annoying, finding out.
So I think you have your answer.
Okay, we have our direction, and we will work with you to map out a process moving forward offline.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right. Everybody, thank you all. Eric, Dan, Ken, the Recycling Commission, thank you all for your hard work on this. Much appreciated. More to come.
Now, the Finance Committee has been with us. Do they need to adjourn or not, or?
They can do.
It's up to them.
They can do, okay.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Finance Committee. You're welcome to stay, but, all right. We're at our 8:20 PM item, which is a continued public hearing from January 24th, a violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 34, sale of alcohol beverages to a person under 21 years of age at MPG Corporation doing businesses, Rapid Refill, 498 Groton Road. So this is a continuation of our public hearing. And Chief Chambers, I see you sitting here, so I'm going to assume that means that Captain Pick is not going to be joining us tonight.
Captain Pick is not going to be joining us tonight. He had a, something come up that he couldn't make it. So, thank you for hearing this. Back on December 21st, one of our detectives was filling up his cruiser at the Rapid Refill at 498 Groton Road, observed a car pull-in and had run the license plate, which showed that it was a 19-year-old male that owned and operated the vehicle, saw that male operator get out of the vehicle, go into the Rapid Refill, and went over to one of the coolers, walked up to the counter to make a purchase, and it appeared that he handed across an identification to the cashier. Cashier then looked at the identification, proceeded to make the sale, knowing that the operator was 19 years old. When he came back, the officer saw he had an 18-pack of Bud Light in his hands, put it into the vehicle, and went to drive off. The detective was able to stop the vehicle on Groton Road, ah, sorry, on Oak Hill Road, and as part of the investigation, saw the Bud Light 18-pack behind the driver's seat, made contact with the operator, confirmed that he was 19 years old, and had a conversation with him about what he presented for an identification inside of the shop. Kind of went back and forth, and the operator said that he had provided a mass ID. The detective then went back and, well, the 19-year-old male is facing charges for minor possession of alcohol. As part of that investigation, he had said that he used a Massachusetts ID. So, on follow-up, the detective went back to the Rapid Refill, spoke with the clerk, who said that he did check an ID, but it was not a mass ID. It was a Rhode Island. He believed it was a Rhode Island ID with the date of birth of 2001. He did end up pulling the surveillance video the next day, did confirm that the clerk tried to identify the individual, and ID was passed across, that he did purchase the alcohol. It appeared to be not a Massachusetts ID. We were not able to locate that identification, but the fact does remain that it was sold to an underage person with an out-of-state ID.
Okay. Let's see. Mr. Cassis has his hand up. Is he counsel for Rapid Refill? Or is, who's here for Rapid Refill to speak on their behalf?
I think Anna was nodding yes, that that's for counsel.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's Anna Toney.
Okay. So, Mr. Cassis is your counsel? Yes? Okay. So, okay, thank you. So, Mr. Cassis, would you like to speak to this?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Louis Cassis. I'm the attorney for Rapid Refill, and I'm familiar with the report. I think the town sent the report over yesterday, and I want to commend the officer for really ferreting out the truth here. Obviously, the clerk tried his best. He should, he got an ID from this young man, and the young man apparently was discredited to the police, kept lying about what had happened. When, if you look at the transcript of all of the IDs that were checked that night, the clerk checked everyone's ID, including this young man's, which showed a Rhode Island license of February 2nd, 2000, who had been 22 years old. The Rapid Refill takes this very seriously. They ID everyone that looks even near 40 years old. They have a perfect record in the town, and also all the other towns that they have gas stations and convenience stores in. And I just think it's an unfortunate situation that, and unfortunately, the young man did get the beer. But I think it's a first offense, and obviously, a lot of effort was put in to avoid it happening. And I would recommend that you issue a warning that we don't do this again, which will never happen again in any way. The clerk is here, if you want to speak to him. Christopher White?
Okay. I'm not, I don't know that we need to, unless anybody from the board wants to hear from him?
I would just, I would just confirm, this is the first offense that we're aware of. However, with the Rhode Island identification, that is not kind of a per se defense for it. Massachusetts driver's license, mass liquor ID, mass ID cards, passport, passport card, and a military ID are forgivable, saying, you know, if it's checked the right way, and somehow the information is wrong, you know, there really is no consequence to the business. Whereas it was an out-of-state ID, it's not an accepted ID in Massachusetts, particularly under the ABCC guidelines. There should have been a second ID check. There should have been some other form of follow-up by the clerk. But it is first offense. We have not had any other issues with them.
Wait, hang on a minute. Okay.
This is first offense. We have not had any other issues with them.
Okay.
I do agree with the officer that under our statute, only a mass driver's license would be acceptable. But with the modern scanners they have now, a lot of establishments do look at, scan them and try to find out if the ID is correct. And I know it's our defense, but the effort was certainly put in by the clerk.
Thank you. Okay. Comments or questions from the board? Scott?
Yeah, I guess probably the chief. I know in the past we've had other issues with out-of-state IDs. I think kind of it's allowed for fake ID of choice. And there was a discussion that, you know, there were readers that were capable of determining, you know, states from out-of-state. The Rapid Refill is certainly one of those. I mean, it's a case of where the ID didn't pass the reader, or where they didn't have the best possible reader.
I, you know, I don't know if it's the best possible reader. They do have a scanner, and unfortunately, this one wasn't working properly. That didn't scan all the licenses the way it should. But he manually put in the date of birth to show that he at least checked the ID. And I know in Massachusetts, the, an underage person has a horizontal, a vertical ID, and an over 21 has a horizontal ID. And the officer pointed out that this person showed a horizontal ID, which would have shown that it was a good Rhode Island license, but a bad Massachusetts license. So the scanner didn't pick it up.
So, the chief, thanks for answering, anticipating my question. So, if by statute, an out-of-state license is an only form of ID, should not be accepted. That should not be, according to statute, that's not an appropriate form of ID. Is it the policy of Rapid Refill in general, then, that you'll accept a non-statute? I mean, what should have happened on your end? Because it sounds like you shouldn't have accepted an out-of-state ID.
I think, I think to read the statute... I, I think, I think to read the statute appropriately, if you accept an out-of-state license, it's not, it's not illegal to accept an out-of-state license, it's just not a defense. So, it's not an adequate defense that we accepted an out-of-state license. If a person appeared to be 30-years-old or 40-years-old, they showed a Rhode Island license, most people would accept that. If you look at the, that night, this young man, he got to meet people that were born in 1953 and 54, but you're right, there's no defense to an out-of-state license.
Chief, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I have, I have the statute in front of me, so there are, there are those six ones that I had read off previously, but it says, reliance by licensee on any other form of identification to determine proof of age does not give the licensee a defense. And that's why it is frowned upon on the out-of-state licenses.
Okay. I understand that this is Rapid Refill's first offense, I understand that you tried to do everything possible, and that you do try to do everything possible to prevent such things, but the fact of the matter is, is that you sold alcohol to an underage minor who showed an out-of-state license, which is not an acceptable form of identification, and that's not a defense. So, it is certainly my recommendation that we follow our policy, which is that for a first offense, it's a three-day suspension of the sale of alcohol. In the past, what we have done to accommodate folks is that we are willing to discuss with you the three days that are chosen for the suspension, they do not have to be consecutive, I had to think of the right word, they do not have to be consecutive, and they can be separate, but it would be my recommendation that we follow our procedure and that we suspend operations of the sale of alcohol for three days. Anita?
I would support that recommendation, I guess I have a question about training, because didn't, during one of our past hearings where there was a violation of a similar nature, we talked about a training, right? That Scott, did you also participate in that of, of something that anyone who's going to sell alcohol has to undergo a specific training, if I remember correctly?
I thi, I don't remember if it was for anybody that was selling alcohol, or if it was the specific vendor who, who had multiple violations.
Oh, okay.
I think that was a condition for them, that they do the, but.
Whatever it is.
This clerk has been with them for eight years, and he's never had a problem in the past, and I'm pretty certain he's been, he's been tip-certified as all of our employees are.
Tip-certified. Tom?
So, I would agree that it's appropriate to follow the policy. It, it sounds like the clerk did everything in the way that he believed it needed to be done, and was quite conscientious, so I guess just the, the question I have is, does there need to be some updating or changing of the policy, or clarification of what your policy is, if someone's close to the age line? I guess that's really a corporate policy and training question, but.
And shows an out-of-state ID.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're willing to accept the risk and accept the consequence, like, it seems like you will tonight, I guess, it sounds like that's not against the law, but I wonder if that's wise.
Ms. Tully has, has her hand up and a comment, so go ahead.
Since we've received the violation, every single one of our employees at the Rapid Refill have been tip-certified. We also have locked down the register, that now we card everyone, you could be 100-years-old, and we need to see your ID, so we have made those changes since then.
Great. I mean, that's terrific, and I'm, we're all glad to hear that, and we appreciate hearing that.
And we do also use a program called the bars program, which we send in people that are of age to verify that we are carding as well.
Okay. So.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, I would like a motion.
A move, we follow the guidelines for a first offense in this case, which would include a three-day subs, three-day suspension on days to be mutually agreed between Rapid Refill and, and it was typically Kristen that would be the counterparty?
Yes.
And what's, this is a terrible motion, how, what's the time interval you should use? Is it in the next 30 days?
Yeah.
Okay, to, to take place in the next 30 days.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, Scott?
Yeah, I think, I really do appreciate that Rapid Refill tried to do the best they could do, but, you have a right to use that underage individuals aren't really smart, and, well, finally, what they can desire to do is still to make sure that they don't fight us the whole, so I'm inclined to agree with the motion.
So, that was a yes. John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, what I would suggest is, either, one of you folks, Mr. Cassis or Ms. Tully, reach out to our town manager, Kristen Lass, and negotiate with her three days when you will suspend sale of alcohol, and then she can report back to the board.
Within the next 30 days.
Within the next 30 days, yes, and she can report back to the board.
We'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And thank you, and we appreciate all of the efforts that you're taking, and we expect that we will never see you here again.
You won't, thank you.
Oh, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
All right, we are at our 8:40 PM item, which is old and new business, so we have a request to revise the personnel policies and procedures, Section 6.9 longevity, to increase longevity payments to the eligible personnel in the amount of $100 per each tier. And I believe Ellen Rainville is with us to talk about this.
Hi.
There you are.
I'm the panelist, thank you. So, I brought this request to the board because with the settlement of the Communication Workers of America contract and the OPEIU contract, a number of managers in town covered by the personnel policy do not have matching benefits for those personnel underneath them. Both of those contracts saw a $100 increase in longevity per anniversary year, and in the library, I brought this forward because there were five staff who oversee staff under them and do not have this parity of benefits. My understanding is now why this would cost $3,400. In other words, there are 34 staff in town covered by the personnel policies who are now collecting longevity payments for their anniversaries. Five of those 34 people are in the library, and full disclosure, one of them is me. There's precedent for going back to the personnel policies and making benefits match those that have been bargained by other unions in town. Most recently, this happened when our personal days were increased to match the personal day that the CWA contract and the OPU, OPEIU contract had negotiated. So, this is really a request for parity, so that those of us covered by the personnel policies have a longevity benefit that matches the workers that we supervise.
Anita?
Was this, thank you, Ellen, was this, was this reviewed by the Personnel Advisory Committee?
Yes, they approved this unanimously retroactive to July 1 of '22.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Comments or questions from the audience? I don't see any, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ellen, and you'll all get your, you'll all get them retroactive to July 1st.
Thank you, and I'm sure other personnel in town thank you as well. Thank you so much.
Good night. Okay, next, we have an update on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Project from Michelle Collette, who was our recreation director.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. Yes, I am presenting on the Uniform Rule signage along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. On September, back in September, there was a meeting with the decision-makers of all eight cities and towns along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. I was the designated representative from Westford at this meeting in West Conville. At that meeting, the set of uniform trail rules was finalized. The new uniform rule sign will replace the varied signs that are currently in each town. These new universal rules are listed right below here, as you can see on the screen. And in addition, the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail will cover the cost of these signs. As you can see right here, these are the, the uniform trail rules, I, now you can read them, real to pedestrians, keep right, pass left, give audible signal when passing, do not block trail, wear helmets, leash pets, remove waste, no littering, carry in, carry out, respect property adjacent to the trail. And at that, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Community Group will also, had also decided that day that they would meet occasionally in the future to determine uniformity amongst other Bruce Freeman Rail Trail issues, so, that is what I have presented this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions?
You're welcome.
Any comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do they have to follow our signed bylaw? How big are the signs?
So, generally, directional signs are not subject to a signed bylaw.
I just was curious.
Yeah.
I just know people and signs, so.
No, I, I think, I think that's right, yeah. Okay, so I think the request is for us, actually, it was just an update, so I don't know that we have to do anything other than, thank you for all, thank you, Michelle, and thank you for attending that.
You're welcome, and happy Valentine's Day, everyone.
You, too.
Take care, bye.
Bye. Okay, our next item is to request to accept the following easements, a trail easement for Diane, Diane, Diane Lane, which is also referred to as 0 and 37 Carlisle Road, and the modification to the previously approved trail and water easements for Cloverleaf Fields, formerly 22 Griffin Road. Are you doing this, Kristen? Did you tell me the planners aren't here tonight?
I believe the planners are tied up this evening, I will do my best to navigate this, and if there are other questions that I can't answer, we can push this off to another meeting, but just in summary, at your annual town meeting on June 11th, Article 14 approved that these easements could be accepted with authorization from the select board, so you do have a memorandum in your packet with the associated trail easement documents and other easement documents, as well as the sketches of where those are located, so that is the extent that I'm able to present to you this evening. Again, if you have further questions, we could push this off, but I believe that it was discussed in detail at the town meeting as well.
Anybody have any questions? I don't think so. So, is there a motion? I'll do them separately, just so, you know, the record is clear, is there a motion to accept the trail easement for Diane Lane?
A move.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And is there a motion to accept modification to the previously approved trail and water easements for Cloverleaf Fields?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have to sign the easements, right? And I can't remember, do we have to, Patty, are electronic signatures okay on the easements, or do you need originals?
I think your electronic are fine.
Okay. Will the registry accept the electronic signatures? Because I believe these might have to be recorded, so it may be safe that we have.
They won't. They won't.
They won't? Okay. They won't. Angela knows.
Okay.
It was a good point, and I, yeah.
I somehow remember that we all have to go in and sign them, so, so I assume you'll be, you'll be in the town manager's office, and if we can all.
Yep, and they will need to be notarized, so either Patty or I can notarize them for you as well.
Yeah, so sometime in the next day or two, if we could all get to the town manager's office to sign them, that would be great. Okay, next.
It'll be today, not one.
Okay, next is to consider 15 appointments for the Community Behavioral and Mental Health Committee as full members for terms expiring on June 30th, 2026, and I will just read the names of the folks who are seeking appointment, and they are Patricia Blackstock, who is the Admissions Guidance Counselor at Nishoba Valley Technical High School, Allison Christopher, Westford Social Worker, Nancy Cook, our town resident, Ray Dick, Westford Health Director, Sarah Glatt, town resident, Sue Hanley, a member of the Westford Board of Health, Meredith Hogarty, a town resident, Nicole LaViolette, who is our Community Wellness Coordinator, Richard Lane Jr., firefighter and paramedic with the Westford Fire Department, Rebecca Lockwood, Minister at the First Parish Church United, Courtney Moran, Director of Pupil Services here in Westford, Brittany Nash, Westford Regional Community Health and Wellness Coordinator, Claire O'Brien, a town resident, Rachel O'Toole, a town resident, James Peliquin, Captain in the Westford Police Department, Babita Piplani, a town resident, Mary Rockwood, a town resident, Catherine Lee Steele Danton, a town resident, Gillian Thatcher, a town resident, and Mary Ellen Wildman, a town resident. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
I have a question. There are 20 people listed.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, yep, there are, so is there a motion to appoint these 20 people?
So moved.
So, there's 15 appointments available.
Ah.
And then, some of them are specialized, you got, and I think we've got all the ones that are designated, we don't have a select board member appointed yet, and we've got, you know, the fire department, we've got fire department covered, Board of Health, Health Director seat, there are four resident large seats, and I think we've got about eight people for them, something like that, and then, then there's one that, Nishoba Tech, Regional Community Wellness, Public Schools Representative, I've got down here where I think they are, but I'm not sure totally which one goes where.
So, my thought is, let's appoint all 20, okay? And I think we have covered all of the.
I think we have all the appointments, if we appoint a select board member.
Right, we have to appoint a select person, and let them go forward, and if for some reason they start to have quorum problems in the future, we'll hear about it, and they'll come back and they'll tell us. I'm, I'm loath to tell the residents who volunteered that we don't, you know, that they, that we're not going to appoint them. So, is there a motion to appoint these 20 folks?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. I know we have to. Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We have to appoint a select board representative.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I know, you're going off the board, okay? I'm happy to volunteer for now. Okay, I will be the select board rep.
Do you want to vote from the board members for that? Or do you usually just do that?
No, I think they're all, I think they're all like, yes, thank you, fine.
Sure.
All right. We are at our 8:55 PM item, which is Annual Town Meeting, which is Saturday, March 25th, 2023.
There's a couple more items on the.
Oops, you're right, I'm sorry, I forgot.
I have somebody on the line in case you have questions.
Oh, the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I have a request from the Zoning Board of Appeals to appoint Dan Britko as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2025, and Jeffrey Valcourt as an alternate member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2026. There is, there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Dan and Jeffrey. And we have a request from the Commission on Disability to appoint Catherine Clear as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion to, if you're welcome, is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
A second? A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I'm at Annual Town Meeting, which is Saturday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at ten o'clock AM in the gym at the Westford Academy. Okay, so the first, um, the first order of business is we need to, um, both review the warrant article and also set the order. So, um, I will very briefly, emphasis on briefly, run through the articles that are on our town warrant today. So Article One is to accept on March, in March twenty-fifth. So Article One is to accept town reports. Article Two is to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget supplementation appropriations. Article Three is to appropriate for procloriates expenses. Article Four is to appropriate opioid settlement funds. Article Five is our approved capital appropriations. Six is to appropriate funding for the construction of a new municipal building located at Fifty-One Main Street. Seven is to appropriate funding for the Lloyd G Blanchard MSBA roof replacement. Eight is to approve community preservation community recommendations. Nine is to amend the Wage and Classification Plan. That is currently a placeholder, depending upon whether we have any amendments. Article Ten is to authorize revolving funds. Eleven, the big one, to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four operating budget. Twelve is to appropriate Chapter Twenty-nine Local Transportation Funds for roadway maintenance. Thirteen is to appropriate funds from Water Enterprise Other Post-Employment Benefits Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise Budget. Fourteen is to authorize the Select Board to accept easements. Fifteen is to authorize the Select Board to accept easements on Garton Road. Sixteen is to authorize the Select Board to accept easements on Old Wall Road. And seventeen is to authorize the Select Board to acquire easements for the Boston Road Reconstruction Project. Six, that was seventeen. Eighteen is, um, to change the time of Annual Town Meeting. Nineteen is to amend the zoning bylaw to regulate indoor and outdoor commercial recreation and winter commercial recreation in addition, in additional zoning districts, and to establish a commercial recreational overlay district related to Kimball Farm and Neshoba Valley Ski Area. Twenty is to amend the zoning bylaw to add seven Carl Thompson Road to the Residence A zoning district. Twenty-one is a placeholder, which is to transfer custody of a parcel on River Street from the School Committee to the Recreation Commission. Twenty-two is to accept burn places a public way. Twenty-three is, um, to ensure the APR on Drew Garden property is enforced. Twenty-four is a citizens petition to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for one additional Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Fifteen Alcohol Beverages Retail License to be exercised by NAB One Stop Shop, Inc., located at Sixty Brookside Road. And that is our town meeting warrant for March twenty-four articles. I know the moderator is here. Do you have any comments about the order? Are you good with the order?
I'm good with the order.
Great, okay. We are gonna, um, we have on our agenda to take a look at several of the articles tonight to see if we can start doing our recommendations. So Article One is to accept town reports. I don't know yet if there are any particular committees or organizations that want to report at town meeting. Have you, Angela, have you heard anything?
I have not. I've heard from anybody that wants to speak.
Okay, so is there a motion to recommend accepting Article One? A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Article Twelve, which is to appropriate Chapter Local, Chapter Ninety Local Transportation Funds for roadway maintenance. This is an article that appears every year. It's so we can appropriate the funds we get from the state to fix our roadways. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Article Thirteen is to appropriate funds from the Water Enterprise Other Post-Employment Benefits Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise Budget. Again, this is an article that also always appears annually on our town meeting to fund OPEB, um, benefits for the Water Enterprise Fund and the employees there. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. There's some questions. Okay. All right, fourteen is the article to authorize the Select Board to accept easements. Again, this allows us to accept easements that may come up during, um, during the year. So is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Article Eighteen is to change the time of Annual Town Meeting. Would the moderator like to speak to this?
Well, I just have one thing that I'd like to bring up. We made some changes to this based on commentary from Town Council, who indicates that statutorily, the Select Board has the right to set the time and date for a town meeting anyway, but that most towns like to have a bylaw like this in place because it allows for better planning by the community. So I hope you'll recommend this article, but I also hope, and maybe it's too late to do this, but it just occurred to me this week, that we might set the time for this town meeting at nine AM instead of ten AM.
Okay, let's talk about the bylaw first.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure, I just thought this might be an appropriate place to.
Let's talk about the bylaw first. Is there a motion to recommend approval of the bylaw, changing the time of Annual Town Meeting from, not the day, just the time it starts, from nine AM, from ten AM to nine AM?
So moved.
A second? Okay, all those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, just one more thing, and I just want to do. Want to make it clear to the public that the Select Board still retains the right to change the date in the event it conflicts with a religious holiday or, or any, for any other reason that makes it inconvenient to hold on that day.
Right, which, as everybody remembers, we did throughout the pandemic.
Right.
Okay, so in terms of talking about changing the time for this town meeting, we've been talking about ten AM since January. And I'm a little hesitant to change it at this late date, a month before the town meeting it starts, and since we've been given, since we've given so much publicity to ten AM, and it's on all our, you know, all our publications, websites, it's been in the Town Managers Newsletter, so while I hear what you're saying, I'm, I think I'd like to keep it at ten.
Okay, I understand. Just, just thought it would be a good idea to bring it up, just in case. Because it is, we do have a lot of articles on, so.
We do, so we expect the moderator to run the meeting efficiently and effectively.
You're not a miracle worker.
The skilled moderator, right.
A coffee food truck, coffee food truck.
All right. And then the last one for tonight is to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for one additional Chapter One Thirty-eight, Section Fifteen Alcohol Beverages Retail License to be exercised by NAB One Stop Shop, Inc., located at Sixty Brookside Road. And I think you said the.
We did notify them, I'm not sure.
Wait, wait, he is here.
Yes.
Okay.
Should I sit or stand?
You, you need to stand at the microphone.
Sure. Good evening.
And you need to tell us who you are.
Yes, I'm going to get to that. So my name is Matthew Faber. I'm the manager of NAB's One Stop. I've been doing it for over fifteen years now. My dad, Joel, is the owner. So thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. We've been in the town over twenty years now. We're hundred, ten percent committed to the town. We follow all the rules with the Board of Health and everything else. As far as the tobacco policy goes with the town, I came to that meeting, I was here a few weeks ago. And we were just committed to making sure we do things right and by the book. The last couple of years have been pretty challenging with the pandemic and inflation. Prices have really gone through the roof. It's, it's affected our business. It even put our competition out of business. And that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, to petition the Board for that beer and wine license. We feel it would bring in much-needed revenue, allow us to bring in some more staff. You know, we're a small business. And then, excuse me, one second. A lot of our customers have been in, our customers are fantastic. Even my employees will say, we have the best customers on earth. But they're asking for these products. I mean, I've been mentioning this, that I've been coming here and I'm petitioning and stuff, and they're already trying to give me lists of products that they want me to carry. And I'm like, listen, it takes time. I have to get there. But it's something our customers have been asking for. We have things in place to handle the beer and wine. We have a state-of-the-art point-of-sale system. It's by Diamond Scan. Earlier tonight, with the underage sale, that's something that we take super seriously, even with just tobacco, E-cigs, cigars. My system is set now that if a customer wants to buy that product, as soon as that product is scanned into the system, there's an ID prompt that comes up, and the only way to get rid of it is with a valid driver's license scans. That is hooked up to all fifty states, so it knows the data. It can read it. They're also, my staff is trained to especially look at out-of-state IDs, and especially if they know, typically IDs go right to the edge. Sometimes you get fake ones that have like a white border around it. That's something that they're very familiar with. Our system can also set the time and day of when sales can happen on a certain department, because there are Massachusetts Blue laws that don't allow sales on holidays and different things like that, or get a start at ten o'clock. Our system can handle all of that. And that's literally, there's no ways around it or anything else like that. Even with the tobacco thing, they cannot get out of it without scanning an ID. It's been a little tough with some customers, but most of them are really understanding. They think it's great. And then, um, let's see here, what else did I want to go over? That's, that's kind of it. We would appreciate your support in this. I know it's a big thing. It's a big thing for me personally, you know, for my family. I, I don't really have much, too much to add to that, but if you guys have any questions for me about our policies, procedures, or anything you'd like to know about our business, I'd be more than happy to answer anything you guys have tonight. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions, comments?
I don't, yeah, I don't have a question for you, but I, I think it's maybe for Patty. So Brookside Convenience, which is right next door to that, has recently gone out of business, right? But they hold an alcohol licensor?
They do.
But it's specific to that location?
No, actually, it's not.
It's not.
But I think somebody is going to.
I think someone's trying to. I've talked to Sabu about it. It's still kind of up in the air. But I figured I'd take at least this next step.
Yes, it's unusual that we don't have any beer and wine licenses in the town at the moment. We have five of them. And he's actually asked for a couple of years and inquired about it, and now is making this step, and now, of course, we don't have any. So that's why he's come to ask for.
Yeah.
At, at town meeting. Yeah, I don't, we don't have an application, a transfer from Sabu's, but he did pay to have it renewed. So he technically.
He still holds it, okay, gotcha.
So you could either talk to him.
I have, and I can't get it. I can't get a straight answer.
I think he's not sure what he's, wants to do, so.
But I always want to take this step, in case that didn't work out with him. But again, I've been in this, this town for so long. I love it. I've developed literally friendships. I got customers that is like a second grandfather, a second father to me. The people here are just fantastic, and it's a pleasure to work here. It really is. Any other questions?
So, thank you. Is there a motion to recommend? A second?
A second. Just, just, I guess, a question.
Yep.
Is it normal with a citizens petition that we would take a position, or is it more normal that the?
We can take a position, yeah, we take positions on citizens petitions. Yeah. Okay, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. So we will recommend, we, it will appear in the, the book that goes to town meeting that we've recommended this. Good luck. It'll be up to the town itself to decide, but good luck, and thank you for all your service here in town and for the years you've been here.
I, I really appreciate it tonight, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thanks.
You have the best candy selection.
Okay.
Can I ask a procedure question?
Yes.
Does the Board vote on setting the order, or is it just standard that you have agreed on the order?
We've just agreed on it, I think. Do we vote on the order? Angela, do we vote, do we actually have to vote the order, or do we just agree with it? I didn't think so, but thanks for confirming that.
Thank you.
All right. Nine fifteen, Board Reports and Updates. Tom and, and Scott have an update on the Town and School Safety Task Force.
Yes, and Scott, maybe I'll go ahead first, and then you can fill in with whatever I've missed. So we're, we're appearing tonight to ask for the Select Board to disband the Town Safety, Town School Safety Task Force. We've been at it, and I think if you looked at the final report, the team's worked really hard. A lot of significant accomplishments on emergency communication and, and thinking about wellness and what services the town should provide, access control to the facilities, so significant capital investment, significant facilities upgrades. I want to just thank all the official members of the Task Force by name. Chief Chambers, Dennis Galvin, Emily Gilstrap, Chris Sanders, Joe Targ, Omar Larino, Carolyn Jurslow, Chris Chu, Sue Hanley, Al Prescott, and then there are many, many other people who helped out along the way. Very, very grateful for your work. There are some remaining action items, sort of follow-up items for some of the work not yet done. The opportunity to get together and meet if, if something comes up, like we did after, after the tragedy in Texas. We, we decided to call a special meeting to see if there were any learnings from that that we needed to, to take on board. That led to some additional training. So there will be a small group that remains able to respond to events and also kind of tick off the remaining action items. But the main, we believe at this point, the main charter of the Town and School Safety Task Force has been met. And so we're asking for you to disband tonight. And Scott, any, anything else I should add, thank yous I should make sure we get?
No, I think, you know, back as a first founded, the committee, Tom and I were, we consider our town meeting a top residence, that we've done everything we could think of to make our, our town buildings, our, our schools safer. You know, honestly say that. So, you know, thanks, all those for partners process. One, one of work and one, one of results. I think we're much better off for it, so we have time to head to bed.
And also really exciting that the Mental Wellness Committee is convening now. They're, they're the natural baton carrier for a lot of the wellness things that we looked into and a lot of the results of the professional surveys that we got to help support our work, so really excited about that.
Okay, I, thank you to all of the people who served on the town, the TSSTF. You know, the work you did was just, was terrific. I think we all feel safer, you know, because of all the work you did, because of what's gone into, you know, improving the safety of our buildings and as well as the attention that has been focused on mental health, so, mental health and well-being, and that is going to be, continue to be focused on moving forward. So to everybody who served on that committee, to everybody who helped out, um, thank you. It's, this one committee that really, the work that you have all done will continue on for years ahead, so we very much appreciate it. And with that, John?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I mean, I think you've done a remarkable job doing what you did. I like the idea of the follow-on committee, or the follow-on group. Have you thought about having any formalized, formalized thing of, you know, to call the chair or something when things change, because things in this world are changing. And we may have, you know, have a good plan now, but after watching that, uh, drill, that active shooter drill and everything else, I think we need to continue to train probably more regularly than we do. And I've talked to the chief about that. And I just think that, that follow-on group's great. I think it's a great idea. Somebody kind of needs to be in charge of that, or somebody needs to kind of be paying attention to what's going on so that you can call them in session, or get together and, and maybe adjust, or look at something that happens in the future that we might want to address. That's just my thinking on it.
Yeah, that's a great point, John. I think at least for now. Yeah, it's a great point, John. I think at least for now, Scott and I will continue to chair the follow-on group.
Okay.
And we've already had a couple of meetings over the summer, so it's, I think it'll be, you know, at the call of the chairs when something comes up that needs the attention.
Okay. That's good. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I think we need, we're actually...
To draw on point, I know that, in fact, well, Tom and I talked to Chief Chambers, and we recognize that while the focus originally was on schools, that these events happen anyplace, in fact, have happened in place. So there will be further training, and that training will be at places that aren't schools. It could be a place of business, it could be a place of worship. Like, we will extend this training so that our, our police, our fire dispatches, the ready to take on these things, or to make it occur.
Great. That's terrific. And that's another advantage, is that all of the information that you have and everything that you've learned over the past years can now be, you know, transferred and shared with, you know, our religious groups and various groups and other entities here in town. So even better. So with that, we're actually going to disband a committee here in the town, which doesn't happen very often. So is there a motion to disband the TSSTF with great thanks and appreciation?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor? Scott?
Many self-serving, but yes.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And, and many thanks to Scott and Tom, who chaired this over the years and who led it, led it to its conclusion. Thank you both very much.
It's a pleasure.
All right. We're at our 9:25 PM item, which is Minutes for Approval.
Sorry, Andrea, I have like one quick update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's very brief.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So I participated in a NIMCOG Strategic Planning Retreat a few weeks ago, and they're very excited to embark on a strategic planning process. And I think I'm an officer, so all the officers are going to be part of this Strategic Planning Committee. Basically, it's something to look out for, for the next six or seven months, where all the, we're trying to, we realize NIMCOG doesn't have a mission statement, so we're going to develop one and figure out our values and core, core mission. Anyway, so just let you know, more information to come. Very exciting.
Great. Are you going to stay as an officer?
Um, I guess, I don't really know how this is going to work. I mean, we have Darren for Planning Board, and then Jim Silva is our alternate. So I'm the liaison for Select Board. We'll have to figure it out.
Okay, great. All right. Now we're at Minutes for Approval. So we have Minutes for Approval and Release for the following regular sessions. January 12, 2023, which is a joint meeting with the FinCom. January 19, 2023, joint with Fin Committee and, FinCom and School Committee. January 24, 2023, and January 26, 2023, which was joint with FinCom. Is there a motion to approve and release?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Kristen, you're up. Town Managers Reports.
So I will go to the formal items on the agenda. I don't have a formal report to give you this evening.
That's okay. Usually it's just this.
Perfect. So there is a contract for your approval of FG Sullivan Drilling Company for an amendment to construction services for the replacement of the Depot Street drinking well water source for $93,896, as requested by the Water Department. Would you like me to take these all in order?
Yeah, we just go all at once, and if anybody has a question, then we'll hold it. Other than that, we do them all at once.
Okay. A contract for the New England Disposal Technologies for Drinking Water Residual Waste from Forge Village Water Treatment Plant in the amount of $22,732.94, as requested by the Water Department. And then a purchase order for the Constant Chlor plus Dry Chlorinator briquettes, that's a mouthful, in the amount of $17,968, also as requested by the Water Department.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to waive reading correspondence?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, everybody, all in favor, just raise your hands. Okay.
Okay. Oh, I thought, I thought Scott already left out.
Nope, he's over here now. He's behind you now. All right. And finally, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody raise their hand. Aye. Good night, Westford. Good night, everybody. Stay safe. And as I said, if anybody's got, this was our first night with hybrid, please let us know how we did, and let us know if you've got any suggestions. Thanks, everyone. Good night.